So we will have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano. Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contra Stalush.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here, and would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and is there a report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you, and just as a point of order, F3 will be removed and heard on July 15th, and that is about the Ops Center. The construction Phase 1 GMP for Eureka Operations Complex, that'll be heard on July 15th. All right, and so with that, we will go ahead and start with our council reports, and we will start with... No, Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, I wasn't fully prepared to report, but I...
We can come back to you? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, come back to me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Yeah, let me see here and get my notes. A lot of meetings, I think CalCities had a... I'm on the Finance Committee for the State of California, Board of Directors for CalCities, had a couple of meetings there. Redwood Coast Energy Authority, which I chair. It's an interesting time for people that are paying attention to federal funds and how that affects our ability to develop more renewables. So it's a really challenging time for the state, for cities, who have mandates and objectives to, you know, develop more solar, wind, and all those things. So suggest you tune in onto one of those meetings to understand kind of what we're dealing with as we try to make our community more sustainable when it comes to energy. I had a bunch of other meetings, but I will say, can't remember the last time, it's only been two weeks or has it been three? Been three weeks. I also did, we had an exchange student that we just, from Finland, that we just sent home, and I just say that it was a wonderful experience for Rotary does a great job of having, you know, helping with exchange and getting students here. And if you have an opportunity to bring a young person into your home from another country, I suggest you do it. It's really, we've done it twice now, and it's been great for our family, and just this, what you learn from others, from other countries and places of the world is really valuable. So I recommend it highly, and they're always looking for host families out there, so... And I'll think I'll just end with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, much in the same vein of everyone else, I'm just putting together my report now. Caught me a little off guard, but thank you. I know I'm planning for an upcoming trip here, I think, from the 20th through the 24th, going to Atlanta, Georgia for the National Association for Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials, the Naleo Conference. In particular, I was very welcome to have received a scholarship for both travel and lodging with the caveat that I attend the workshop on housing and homeownership. So looking forward to the rest of their agenda. And then I know when we had last spoke, Councilmember Moulton and myself had met with the chamber in our two-by-two, and I've since reached out to some of the advocates for the unhoused, and I'm trying to put together at least some sort of dialogue with some of the business owners. So I still need to finish and reach out to the chamber and their executive director. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much. I don't have any travel to report. I did attend the reopening of Humboldt Bay Fire Station 3 after it was closed for a remodel. The firefighters have been back in there for a little bit. We had an official reopening, attended that with the mayor, who got to cut a fire hose in half instead of a ribbon. Tended, I suppose it was supposed to be a two-by-two, but it was just me with Economic Development. Did the chamber. The Humboldt Bay Fire Board meeting has been, the July meeting has been postponed because of vacations, and we didn't have a quorum. And before our... Nope, we'll have another meeting before we go, but I guess I'll talk about that later. Never mind. I want to say it now. Mayor Burgel and I have been invited to Kamisus, Japan. Eureka Sister City is celebrating their 20th anniversary of becoming a city, and they are going to fly Mayor Burgel, myself, and the leader, and Jay Tillman, leader of the Eureka Sister City Project, over to Kamisus for their anniversary party for about one day. But I'm looking forward to it anyway, representing Eureka and California in Kamisus. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, thanks for your patience there. Let's see, I organized a presentation with Erin Ekhaus of California YMB at the Community Economic Resilience Consortium Group. I attended a meeting with residents on C Street to share information about the Bike Boulevard. I just wanted to thank Jesse Willer for, and Miles, sorry, City Manager Slattery, for presenting some really great information there. I attended the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, which we adopted the budget there, and the trail opening for the Eureka Arcata portion of the trail, and it's really exciting. There's so much enthusiasm around that trail being opened. So if you get a chance to take the trail between Arcata and Eureka. And I'm adjacent to council, but it does overlap. I attended several meetings related to the Northern California Association of Nonprofits, which is part of a leadership group that supports nonprofits in the community. And coming up this Friday is the Humboldt Transit Authority Strategic Planning Session. And just so folks know, the North State Transit Symposium is taking place next week in Fortuna on the 15th through the 17th of July. Kind of a whole bunch of transit leaders, bus service companies from the northern part of the state and really throughout the state are going to be here to share ideas around transit. And folks should really understand that our local transit authority is really showing a lot of leadership in the state and in the nation in terms of hydrogen buses and a lot of the innovations around transit. So, you know, and, oh, buses are free this month. So if you get a chance, take a bus. All right, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Contra Stalush?
Yeah, okay. So I online attended the Board of Supervisors. They had an economic presentation on economic development. I attended one of our Friday night markets and got to speak with some of the actual, got to speak with business owners about kind of their feelings about how that's working and some of the adjustments that have been made. And it was nice to hear how favorable they were about the way that the city had worked with them and their different community, different businesses. Everybody kind of has different interests based off of where they're at. I attended the Home and Garden Tour. Also attended the CalCities Community Services. We talked about a number of different ways that budgetary changes are going to affect different programs in California and how that might trickle down and disseminate into our local communities. I got to go to a fundraiser and hear Frankie Myers speak from the Uroc Tribe and talking about community investment and environmental investment. I did a, I got to visit, I got to visit the Crowley temporary housing that we have, and I actually used our trail to do that. So I spent three days on the trail. My spouse and I went, Scott has something to say over here. But we, but we had, we got an opportunity to go across the trail. It's beautiful. We definitely think we need to figure out ways that we're going to increase accessibility for people who don't have the same kind of mobility as the rest of us. It's a really beautiful trail, and I would love for everybody to get to experience that. Let's see. Oh, one of the things we talked about for CalCities Community Services, one of the goals is effective disaster preparedness, and there's a couple of trainings that are going to be going up on, going on up in Blue Lake that I'm going to be attending on leadership and kind of our role in being prepared for disasters. And then other than that, just meeting with different constituents, taking calls and talking with everybody, and I think that's the bulk of it.
Thank you. And for my mayor's reports, I'd like to report that I was able to go to the Coast Guard Change of Command and say goodbye to Scott Powers. Captain Scott Powers, and welcome. Captain Michael Baird. It was a beautiful ceremony up where the helicopters are in McKinleyville. I got to walk in support of human trafficking awareness and have some really in-depth conversations with a couple of survivors. Powerful, courageous women. And they could certainly use our support in many ways. I too attended the grand opening of the Bay Trail, which is fabulous. You know, lived here my whole life. I've never been behind Brainerd, you know, when you're going out towards Arcata. And now, guys, we can go back there. It's absolutely gorgeous. And the day, the next day, we rode our bikes out to Arcata and then all the way back. And it was so beautiful to watch the fog come across the bay and have the sun. It was just a fabulous thing. So if you get an opportunity, I'd really encourage you to use it. You can go out to Arcata, take breaks, there's lots of benches. Have some ice cream in Arcata and come on home. Let's see, I did the Arcata Marsh Run on the 4th of July. Best of my time again, so super excited about that. And I had the honor and privilege of meeting Jared and Kim with Pyros Spectacular, and I was gifted the opportunity to sign two bombs for the fireworks. One for my mother, who died in 1984, and one for my cousin, who died 20 years ago to suicide on 4th of July. So that was a very special moment, and I appreciate being invited and having that opportunity. I attended the Old Town festivities on the 4th of July, and really want to thank Amanda Krujki for really doing a great job. I know there was, it was a big team effort, but, you know, she goes out there like 6:00 in the morning and stays out there till like 8:00 at night. And I really, I want to appreciate the dedication that she has to that work. And it was a lot of fun. I met with a lot of constituents, rode the new trail. I went to the ribbon cutting for Humboldt Bay Fires, their new Station 3. It's so beautiful. And the interesting thing about their ribbon cuttings is they use the little tiny, like, shears that you use for a first aid kit. So you're trying to cut this little tiny hose with these little tiny shears. It was kind of an interesting thing. And then I was able to go to the grand opening of the Community Learning Center at the Boys and Girls Club. It's so awesome. There's this wonderful, AT&amp;T donated this, all this equipment, computer equipment to teach our kids, AI, all the different things to keep them up with what's going on in the world and in the computer sciences. And it's just such a gift for them to do that. And the kids were in there, of course, they wanted to play video games first thing, but you know, they'll learn other things as well. And then I wanted to thank Hank Seaman and the whole team that, for the last 20 years, have been working on the trail. It's been a long haul, and, you know, the tenacity that people put into things really matters. And then two other things that came forward as we were hearing reports. One of them is that the fish market is happening next, on the 12th, down at Matticat Plaza. So if you're looking for fresh fish, head on down. And then lastly, Friends of the Dunes, we were talking about mobility. Friends of the Dunes now has a beach wheelchair. So if you have friends and family that haven't been able to go on the beach because they don't have the mobility, there's an opportunity for that now. So you can look them up. So that's kind of what I've been up to, not too much lately, but some. And we will now move on to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. The time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items is a maximum of 30 minutes, shall be allotted to receiving public comments at the initial comment period, public comment period, if necessary. An additional period shall be allotted to public comments after City Manager reports, but only if the first 30 minutes of public comment period was not sufficient to allow all those who wished you to speak to do so. And the public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. At the time an item is considered, the mayor will ask those attending the meeting in person to line up on both sides of the council chamber or raise their hands, and for remote participants to use nine on the telephone or raise hand function in Zoom if they wish to address the council. The maximum amount of time for each person to speak and the total amount of time allotted for each item will be determined based on the number of people indicating an interest in speaking and the amount of business to be conducted on the agenda. In certain circumstances, when necessary, to ensure a full opportunity for public input, the mayor may adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on non-agenda items in public comment? Come on up, Joanne. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if it's just me and my bad hearing, but everybody's so soft spoken. Maybe you're mic-ing or turn up the volume a little bit.
Oh, your mic's not on, Joanne.
Okay.
We hear you now.
But same about you. My name's Joanne McGarry. Thanks for hearing me out. And I do live in Arcata, so that's what I have to say to begin with. But I was in Eureka speaking at the County Board of Supervisors this morning, and I had to take some friends to the emergency room at St. Joe's. And now I'm here to talk to you about climate and disaster preparedness, and also about bicycling and other ways that we travel around our county. And I will start with that. I have an e-bike now, and I took it on the trail on the day of the opening, and I took it two days later to go to a Board of Supervisors meetings. And I deliberately didn't recharge it so I could see what the reality was for me when I got to Eureka. I had challenges parking safely at the courthouse, which I let the supervisors know. And then I fortunately got someplace to charge up my e-bike. But for those of us who want to use that as a mode of transportation, I want to make sure that places like the Earth Center and all have safe parking for all sizes of transport vehicles, like electric bikes or tricycles or recumbents or cargo bikes or bikes with trailers. Because, you know, everything's not just a Schwinn 10-speed anymore in size and shape and all that. So we really, besides a beautiful trail, please really think about safe parking at the destination you're going to. And then again, for housing, whether you're rich or poor, safe places to park your bike where you live. I have to put mine inside my tiny apartment, and it's a tripping hazard. So I do what I have to do. But climate. We have a lot of information now about the floods in Texas, and we are, we need to get our climate action plan going, and we need to stop, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And we really need to practice emergency preparedness, you know? We need to practice it. We have a great time celebrating so much in this county, but we got to stop celebrating so much until we really kind of can show we can do something when times are hard and desperate and disasters hit. We got to show that we can respond and mutually aid each other in community. So let's do something like that, and then we can celebrate.
Thank you, Joanne. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Andrew DeWid. I am a, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a special education teacher here in Eureka, and I'm also a member of the Humboldt Tenants Union. I've come today to first thank Councilmember Castellano for introducing the agenda item last time for, in the coming months, talking about future tenant projections. And thanks for everyone else for agreeing. And I also agree, that's a good thing to investigate. You guys all have seen the housing report for 2025? Like, 6,000-ish people who are housed are not able to adequately afford it. And that's not counting the unhoused people. 1,600 unhoused people in the county. So basically, what I'm asking and proposing is to just be really like as bold as possible when considering this. There's a lot of good examples out there. Richmond, for example, in 2016 declared the housing a public health and safety emergency, which granted the locality an ability to enact a emergency rent freeze, which is temporary, but it's not nothing. Another idea is a rent board, which would, if made up by renters themselves or tenants themselves, is pretty good because it really does bring democracy to an institution that has really no democracy. Every year, my rent raises by more than my income, and I'm a teacher. I feel like I have a really good job. And I should be able to continue affording where I live reliably. So having a rent board would essentially be a body that landlords would appeal to if they were ever, would want to raise the rent or evict someone. And really, tenants kind of don't have any say in when the rent is raised, by how much, or what that money is spent on. We kind of are just told like, "Oh, you can move," or "Apply for a voucher," or some other really just like, I don't know, just nothing, really. So this is me asking you guys to be bold, and there's a lot of people out there who are not afraid to be bold, and they're snatching people up in the street and ruining everyone's life. And, yeah, and also on the Avelo thing. Boycott Avelo. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, council and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sadio Barahaz, and I'm a field rep with the NorCal Carpenters Union, Local 751, which covers Humboldt County. I'm here to talk about the core values we represent with the carpenters union. Our goal is to provide a knowledgeable apprenticeship program, provide extensive health benefits for our workers, encouraging local employment opportunities for our members, and fair wages. Our statewide apprenticeship program is essential in assuring quality of work. It is designed to create a new generation of skilled carpenters who are trained in the latest technologies and strategies. Our apprenticeship does not only train our members, but instills a sense of pride, responsibility, and craftsmanship. By investing in our programs, we ensure our workforce is competitive and able to meet the needs of the industry's ever-evolving demands. Another key point of our values is our commitment to providing health care for our workers. Carpentry is physically demanding, so it is essential for our workers to have access to these benefits for them and their families. These benefits not only include immediate medical care, but preventative care and long-term health support. A healthy workforce is a dynamic workforce, and by prioritizing our workers, we ensure that they can contribute tactfully and safely. Another one of our pledges is to hire locals. When we hire locally, we strengthen our community by creating economic growth that is reflected in local business, which will increase the prosperity of our communities. Local workers tend to be more vested in projects that are in their own neighborhood, resulting in higher quality of work and shorter commute hours. Furthermore, local employment reduces the carbon footprint associated with commuting, contributing to our environmental sustainability goals. Prevailing wages isn't just a number. It represents the fair wages that tradesmen and women deserve and work hard for. These wages allow workers to support them and their families, contribute to local economy, and ensure high-quality work that impacts infrastructure and safety. In conclusion, our core values include dedication to our apprenticeship training, comprehensive health benefits, our pledge to hire locals, and fair wages. These values are essential in maintaining a skilled and healthy craftsman and women, creating a ripple effect in our communities and the youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak in items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll go over to Zoom. Ellen?
Hello, City Council. I would like to start thanking Councilmembers Fernandez and Castellano for sending the letter to Calpers Board of Directors demanding they divest from companies that are supporting Israel's genocide in Palestine. I also want to thank Katie Moulton for requesting a staff report regarding this issue. We're really looking forward to seeing that. I do want to let you know that the letter has been updated based on the 2023-2024 Investment Report, which was just released last month. And that is available on our website at divesthumboldt.wordpress.com. And you can also follow us at @divesthumboldt on Instagram for updates. Unfortunately, I also need to address something that was said by my council representative at the last meeting, and I promise I have reviewed the decorum rules for public comment and will follow them, so there will be no need to interrupt me. At the last meeting, Councilmember Bauer spoke about the politically motivated attacks on state senators in Minnesota, which resulted in the tragic deaths of two people. A moment of silence was had, which was fine, but Scott also used these people's deaths to reprimand us all once again for not speaking nicely enough to him. And Kim agreed with him, of course. The alleged assassin in these attacks was a right-wing white man with a history of military service. And yet, the only people I've heard Scott directly admonish for our public comment are those of us who spoke out against the city's proposed ordinance that would have made homelessness illegal. He made these comments on April 15th of this year, so it's hard not to see last month's comments as a continuation of this admonishment. Although I believe those of us he was addressing have nothing whatsoever to do with any assassination activity in another state, let alone in Eureka. Furthermore, I was appalled to hear Scott use this tragic loss of life as another excuse for him to whine about having to listen to us disagree with him. Once again, Councilmember Bauer is using his platform to center himself and his feelings, and in this case, use the deaths of people in another state to do so. Frankly, I'm tired of having to use my public comment time to call out these deplorable statements by my own council representative. Please do better. Thank you.
Jamila? Amy?
Um, I...
Oh, there she is.
Yeah, I was not able to be unmuted, so thank you. Hi, everyone, my name's Jamila. I am one of your local Palestinians who has family in Gaza, being bombed by the Zionist state. So I wanted to just come here and uplift and really emphasize how important it is that you take real steps towards divesting from genocide of Palestine, specifically in this context uplifting what Ellen just said, that you pursue the Calpers divestment from companies that are profiting off of the settler Zionist state's assault on Gaza, on my family. And just speaking to, just some of the things that we've been talking about so far in this meeting is environmental justice, and so let's talk about what that means when our tax dollars are funding the dropping of US-backed bombs on Gaza, on babies, on children, and the flattening of entire neighborhoods, the poisoning of land, air, and water. This is what we could call ecocide. It's beyond genocide. And Calpers is specifically invested in weapons manufacturers that are making it happen. So we need to remember that, that we have this beautiful land and community that we all have access to, which is incredible, and remembering also whose land that we're on that makes that even possible. Environmental justice means nothing if it doesn't include the people of Palestine, if it doesn't include those living under siege and occupation and apartheid. And definitely uplifting the divestment from Avelo Airlines and recognizing this interconnection of all of these things. If we're supporting ICE deportation flights.
So that'll be another agenda item, Jamila, that you're welcome to comment on at that time.
Okay, we'll just want to uplift that. So yeah, please stop funding genocide. Thank you. Thank you.
Amy?
Hi. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I'm here to echo Andy with the Humboldt Tenants Union in thanking Councilmember Castellano for bringing up the presentation from Arcata about the Venter Board. Um looking forward to seeing that on the agenda and then also um just echoing that sentiment of being bold. And thinking of um possibilities outside of uh the constraints that we normally see. Um a bunch of us spoke at the uh school board meeting last week against CHP um having the uh former campus. We were a little late, but um we learned that school boards in California have the capacity to build housing dedicated to teachers. And um it was actually city manager Satori who um shared that information. And um it's that is brilliant and amazing and thinking of things like that and those kinds of alternatives. Um that can really support the people in our community that are not only struggling now, but are going to continue to struggle as we face some of these more dire economic times. Um also just wanna throw in my support for Calpers divestment. It's a really easy thing. Um you know, whether or not our letters have a difference on um if they do divest, it would still mean a lot to show your support for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, and with that, we will close the public comment and bring it to public hearings. Public hearings are scheduled for a time certain of six PM, which we're a little late unless noticed otherwise. Um and we'll call up Director Malar with the proposed fee schedule.
Uh good evening. Uh tonight's public hearing is on the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six proposed fee schedule. Uh this is gonna be a two-part presentation. Uh I'll begin and then pass it off to the city engineer. Uh but typically, uh the fee schedule is uh analyzed um every year by all the departments. Uh we look to essentially recapture the cost of providing a service. Um and it's a comprehensive fee schedule. It incorporates most departments. Um if you have any questions about any individual fee, I'd be happy to answer your question. But that does not include the super lateral fee, which the city engineer will speak about um afterwards. So that is all I have for tonight.
Any questions? Council member Bauer.
Thank you. Um I was looking at um page twenty-seven. Uh it's the tree removal permit. I think it's E, I think it's E one. Um I'm just curious, what is the the fee actually cover?
Uh so I will, I believe that uh Director
Director Kenyon should be on
On Zoom.
I believe this is related to ordinance, nevermind.
The tree removal permit is if you're removing more than five protected trees of twenty-four inch diameter greater in a ten-year period. And the fee is because I believe there is a public hearing on it. And noticing.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Council member Conchera Stiloe.
Hi, I just had a couple of questions. It was uh page forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty. It was um all uh fees related to just changes in fire and I just was curious. So for instance, on page forty-eight, uh talking about um work performed by streets and maintenance administered by the fire department. Um uh going into their, the costs per hour and some of these have like forty and fifty percent increases. And I was just wondering, is that because they were priced way too low? It just seems like that's a big difference and I was wondering uh how to account for that.
It's, uh can you read the fee again? And I'm sorry, I don't have
Yeah, so for example, on on page forty-eight, um there's the state mandated licensed facility inspection section. Like final fire clearance per hour, one hour minimum ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. Proposed change and increase in forty-three dollars and forty cents for a total of one hundred and forty-two dollars. And so about a forty percent increase. Or no, maybe that one's about
Okay, so it's it's not related to um removal of of fire hazards or anything. It's more the chief Citro?
Yeah, I just
You come up and help out council members.
Thanks.
I was just asking that question because sometimes public works has to do something.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. That went to that. I was curious about that one. And then right underneath it, it's like new and remodel project inspections. You know, some of those had increased from two hundred ninety-five to four hundred twenty-six or hundred ninety-seven to two hundred eighty-four. It was just, it was a big enough leap that I was wondering if it was because we were under or like what had happened.
Yeah, so uh what we discovered when we adopted our fee schedule for the JPA, which the city also has to adopt too, that our fee schedule has not been increased since the formation of the JPA in two thousand and thirteen. So those costs have not gone up. Um specifically to the plan reviews and things like that, we use a third party to do our plan checks and reviews for us and their costs go up. So we um get a hundred percent recovery of that cost for that. Um in regards to the state mandated um inspections that we have to do in regards to R one, R two, which are apartment buildings. Um schools, um institutions and things like that, those fees have not gone up in ten years. And we developed a cost recovery formula based on staff time to use, that's used to do those inspections. Whether it's the fire marshal, the fire inspector and our administrative assistant who does the billing for those. So those are all calculated into that and that's the fee that we came up with because they're based off of two thousand and twelve numbers and salary schedules and things like that.
Yeah, I wondered when I was going through it, I thought some of these look a little bit low and I I wasn't sure what the reason was for it, but it sounds like it's been sitting there for thirteen years.
It has. It has. When uh when I took over and we went to adopt the fee schedule, I sat down with the fire marshal and the business manager and we looked over all our fees and discovered that and went back and back and back and tracked them all the way back to the formation of the JPA that they had not been updated in eleven years, pretty much, so.
Well, I I appreciate your attention to it. Thank you, chief.
And it does represent a true cost recovery of what our cost is to provide those services, so.
Yeah, thanks so much. That's it.
Council member Castellano.
Thank you. Um this is related to the lateral fee increase.
Can, could, we're gonna do a quick presentation on that. With the director.
Nevermind.
Oh, go ahead, council member Bauer.
Yeah, on page forty-three, you know, deals with water rates. And they're going up about ten percent this year, roughly. Yeah, and this is probably more for the public than, you know, we have pretty massive infrastructure projects going on related for a number of reasons. You know, um trying to reduce our outfall, effluent issues. Um but my question is, when do we expect our rates to kind of level off to something more closer to the CPI or something? Because we've been doing this quite a bit, you know.
So I I will say this, the the majority of the of the increases that we've had for our last two rate reviews were based off um not doing them leading up to an older infrastructure, rehabbing older infrastructure, those type of things. In the future coming forward, I don't see any flattening out. Um especially due to our permitting issues related to wastewater. I maybe on the water side, um we'll catch up and 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 we'll see that flattening up from the wastewater side because of um our permit situation, because of the um consent decree that we have um with the court decision. Um I don't see that happening at a minimum in the next couple of rate reviews. Um a big factor in that is what we're gonna be doing with our outfall. Um right now, we're in discussions with the regional board and working on maintaining our bay and estuaries discharge as opposed to um an ocean outfall. Um there could be a significant, 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 very, very significant increase if we're looking at an ocean outfall. Um and so those are yet to be determined. Um we have had good conversations with the regional board about our existing bay and um estuaries discharge. Um and so we're hoping we keep along those lines and that'll help um minimize those increases. But on the wastewater side, I definitely um don't see it um flattening out anytime soon.
When was it built? When was our wastewater facility built?
Eighty-three, I believe. It was in the eighties after the um, we got money from the feds in order to build it, but it was in the eighties.
All right. Well, I just want the public to understand. I mean, you know, it's one of those issues that's kind of beyond our control. Um but something that we need to really work hard to figure out how to keep our costs down.
And we 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 need a lot of legislative help with this. We've talked about this with council. We've talked about um the the state revolving fund. That um is um is you're eligible for it if you serve um less than twenty-five thousand people. We serve forty-five thousand people with the city of Eureka as well as the H C S D um users of that. If that number is changed, we have access to a lot of other funding. And then when we look at sea level rise and we look at um wastewater plants that are in areas that are vulnerable. Um I think there needs to be a lot of pushing from the legislature to look at funding for relocation of distribution system and collection systems and treatment plants and those type of things. Because the costs are gonna be so prohibitive to have those be put on the back of ratepayers. Because it's gonna be a significant amount of money for, you know, potential relocation of those facilities. And even armoring those facilities will be expensive too, even if you don't relocate them.
Thank you.
Anything further? Council member Conchera Stiloe.
Back to the point that council member Bauer had brought up. I know I had said, I think the last time we raised them, that I wasn't gonna raise them again. I was gonna vote no the next time this came in front of me because people are broke. Um and I just am wondering, uh that, you know, and obviously everything's coupled together, so I'm not in a position to do that. Um but I I I'm just wondering if there isn't anything else that we can do. Because I mean, really, a ten percent increase is significant when nobody's income is increasing at that pace and people are really struggling. And so I that I am, I I just, I am very uncomfortable with us continuing to increase rates on ratepayers. Um I'm not uncomfortable. I don't wanna do it.
Yeah, so the this was a part of the last rate review and when we did this, it was over a five-year period and it was spread out. I I forget with the water and wastewater side, but one of them was a close to sixty percent over those five years. Um we are gonna be doing another rate review um next year, correct?
So fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven is the final year of the previous rate study. So we'll begin looking at uh a new rate study um sometime next fiscal year.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of these things, we're trying to um um decrease the costs through those sea level rise things. We're looking at funding um to protect not only our infrastructure, but also prepare for sea level rise so we can get kind of um, you know, climate change type of grant funding that will help offset the cost for our wastewater treatment plant. So we're looking at those options. Because those are available to us and there are grant fundings available for those, um you know, living shorelines, you know, armoring shorelines, those type of things. There's, there's those monies available for sea level rise, not necessarily for wastewater, but it'll help alleviate the costs that we'd have to put on our ratepayers for those situations. As far as a treatment plant itself like that, there really needs to be um some legislature. There needs to be some really big time legislature. When the Clean Water Act went through, we had to put this treatment plan in place. It, we had min- hundreds of millions of dollars that are made available to us to build this treatment plant. And when we're looking at big changes like this, whether it's us or Monterey or different people that are along the coast that have their infrastructure in those locations, it's not reasonable for even affluent areas to be able to cover those costs. So um we don't know exactly what our next rate review looks like. We do know that we are gonna have another increase coming up. That was based on the previous approval from council for that five years. But we don't know what that next rate review looks like until we actually go through it.
Um thank you for such a thorough answer. I really appreciate it. And I know you and I talked about this at one point. And I had said, is there any way we can try to tier things so that people with lower incomes or they're older? And you said, no, it's against the law.
Well, I I wanna clarify, if council chooses to subsidize that with general fund monies, I believe we can do that.
We can change. Can we?
Yeah.
Um, okay, that'll be in a requested future item then, I guess, for you guys to come back and explain or report things to us. Um I at another time. Um my understanding, I thought it was something that we couldn't do because I knew that the governor had um had vetoed multiple attempts for that to be changed, but there's some other workaround where we could
Prop two eighteen doesn't allow you to base your rates off of that, but if council chose to say we want disadvantaged community members to be subsidized. We can find an alternative source, not from the uh the enterprise funds itself, from another funding source like the general fund to offset that cost.
Okay, I don't wanna belabor the, uh is it okay if I ask one more question on this, along the same line? Is that, uh do you know what kind of limitations are placed on that? Is it something that can be done for people who are elderly, handicapped? Is it based off the income, age, disability, like?
Our discretion.
Yeah, it's your discretion.
We can design the program as um the council sees fit.
Just, just remember that that comes from the general fund. It would go away from the general fund for other purposes, but yes.
No, I understand that. There's a lot of different things that the general fund goes to. I think making sure that people are able to keep their water going when they're in poverty might be. Or elderly or disabled would be a significant good use, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Castellano.
Um only because it's become uh come up in the course of this discussion. I mean, we have had programs uh that did, you know, offer uh relief for folks who were unable to, you know, pay the full of their bills or pay their bills. Are those, those are still ongoing, am I correct, or they've subsided or?
Yeah, we did a a huge program during COVID. Um we used a lot of our uh ARPA, I think it was ARPA money, wasn't it?
Uh it was the CARES program.
Yeah, the CARES program used money to to cover costs associated with that. Um it's not happening now. We don't have any funds left over, correct?
We also did a, as part of the participatory budget process.
Okay, that was the one.
Yeah, added more money to that program, but yeah, we could quickly put that back together with the funding.
Yeah, and we did that, I believe it was for rent though, wasn't it, and utilities?
Both rent and utilities.
Yeah, we did do that, yeah.
Uh we also delayed uh water and wastewater increases during the pandemic. So instead of, because the the fees get or um the rate study assumed that we would do increases every year. And we delayed it, um I believe, two years during the pandemic.
Anything further down here? Go ahead.
Pull up a question about the delay during the pandemic. That was pre-me. Um was that um just anybody who was kind of struggling and it was based off the fact that it was during the pandemic? What was the parameters on that?
It it was the all the entire rate increase. So basically, instead of going ten percent, when, uh these aren't exact numbers. But just to say, in twenty twenty, we were supposed to raise it ten percent. In twenty twenty-one, we're supposed to raise it ten percent. In twenty twenty-three, we're supposed to raise it ten percent. We didn't raise it ten percent in twenty twenty and we didn't raise it ten percent in twenty twenty-one, but in twenty twenty-two, we raised it thirty percent.
And the thought process on that at that time was what?
Um that lessened the impact. ARPA, one of the major categories with the ARPA funds or the eligible categories was uh water and sewer infrastructure. So we took some of the the monies received through ARPA to pay for capital projects. And that allowed us to keep the rates um flat for a temporary period of time.
And I guess that's maybe a question for council members that we're serving. Was the intent basically like, hey, we're during a pandemic and assumption of kind of financial strain during that time? I would argue we might be there again. Okay, thank you.
So sewer laterals?
Yes, so I'll invite uh city engineer Willer up here. Derek, can you pull up the presentation?
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Um tonight I will um take off where financial All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, tonight I will um take off where Finance Director Millar left off and um talk a little bit about our sewer lateral uh fees that are represented in the, the updated fee schedule here. You know, we have a little background on our sewer lateral ordinance. Um, I, I feel like we've talked about this an awful lot, whether it's during capital planning or um the few instances we've met on this particular topic. Um, but I'll give a brief background um for everyone all anyway. Um, so sewer lateral ordinance for the City of Eureka um kind of stemmed from starting with changes to, at the federal level, to the Clean Water Act um where regulations changed and outlawed blending. And that blending is the process of taking your um during wet weather events at the wastewater treatment plant where we get large peaks in our flows to the, to the treatment plant. Um, there's a lot of inflow and infiltration that gets in the collection system. That comes down to the treatment plant and results in large flows there. Um, historically, the way our, our plant and, and the majority of plants that were permitted during this era in the eighties, um, they were allowed to blend their effluent, meaning they would take their primary effluent and they would um and, and the treated effluent they had and they would blend it together. They would disinfect it and discharge it. And that was a, an, an okay thing to do. And it didn't result in um limit violations as far as effluent limits and testing through those times. So it wasn't a water quality issue, so to speak, but times have changed and at the federal level, um, that required blending to be outlawed. Um, that in turn had the Regional Water Quality Control Board um uh react to that and make changes to um discharge permits in the state of California, including the Elk River Estuary or Elk River Wastewater Treatment Plant. What we do know about INI and, well, those changes, I should say, to the permit really are required us to eliminate bypassing of uh of wet weather flows, meaning we need to treat all the flows that come through the treatment plant. Um, so one way you get at that, um, outside of making changes to the treatment plant is to make changes in the collection system. Um, limit water from getting into the collection system and that can come from a number of ways. Um, that can come from repairing mains, repairing laterals, um, trying to find sources of inflow into the system where there's plum storm drains that may be connected into the system, which are a lot, those are very rare, actually. We don't see a lot of those. Um, so that's really, that causes INI. It causes that to have that condition where we would have large flows at the treatment plant, um, needing to treat a lot more water. So you're sending five to six more times water than you typically would um down through the treatment plant, sometimes seven. Um, and our treatment infrastructure was never designed to do that when it was installed during the eighties. So um limiting it in the collection system and making changes at the treatment plant is a way that you can kind of get at it from both directions. You can kind of limit the amount coming down the pipe to the treatment plant and then you can also make changes at the treatment plant to treat a larger volume of water for secondary treatment. Uh, laterals fall in the category, um, and they're a very actually high um contributor to the INI picture. Um, mains contribute, laterals contribute. Laterals um tend to pass through yards rather than being in the paved roadway and in yards you have a lot of, you have trees, you have other things that can get into uh where roots can intrude into the lateral where you have a lot of joints. In our case, we have a lot of clay, um, vitrified clay pipe around the city. So that causes there to be damage to the pipe, allows more groundwater or rainwater to get into the system and go down the pipe. Um, a little background on, specific to the ordinance, it was adopted in, in twenty-twenty. Um, with that kind of um background in mind of trying to limit INI into the collection system, knowing that we had these regulatory issues that we're dealing with at the treatment plant. In twenty-twenty-three, um, we added a point-of-sale trigger to the sewer lateral portion of the municipal code, um, sewer lateral ordinance. Um, that was a requirement of a settlement with Ecological Rights Foundation. They were, they stood hard and fast on that as something that had to be and as part of that settlement agreement. Um, and so that was included in twenty-twenty-three. Um, also during that time, we added in a fee-in-lue option um to pay for lower lateral replacement um via a city project. So that's kind of where we're at today, talking about a fee-in-lue. We have this fee where the city puts out a project, that project um installs laterals. Um, we, we give um folks an opportunity to basically pay into that project at a discounted rate, about twenty, um, about a twenty percent discount um to what the actual bid cost was for the project um in order to um have an easy way to have it taken care of. More or less have, you know, you pay a fee and it's taken care of for you and it's, and it's a reduced fee option. This doesn't, um, this also leaves the option if folks want to have a private contractor um install an upper and um, and, and that's for the lower, I should say, but it also provides an opportunity for um the lower to be done by a private contractor if the homeowner chooses. And twenty-twenty-four, there was an exception, uh, revision to the exception section that was relatively minor, but that, that was, did occur. Um, here are the current triggers. So as we just talked about, there is a point-of-sale, but there's also a, a long list of other triggers as far as building permit valuations, um, adding ADUs, um, increases in fixture units, um, changes to flow or strength, if there's like a change of use of the property that could trigger. Uh, if there's a subdivision, if you're subdividing a parcel into multiple parcels, that would trigger. Um, if there was a city main replacement, that's a trigger um for, for um lateral um for the, for the program. And then broken lines. If you have a break in your system a, a number of times, um, then that's going to trigger you to um be, get it, get it inspected and determine if you need to have it replaced. So now to the fee section. Um, first, a brief recap of what we, where we've been. Um, so in February the eighteenth, um, during our mid-year uh fee schedule for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, there was a, a report by the finance director and um there was a, a fee for a, a, a deep lateral was added to the fee schedule. Um, the outcome of that was that meeting got continued until the next meeting. So March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, um, again, a report was given um on, including um background on sewer lateral fee-in-lue. Uh, council moved forward with the mid-year fees, but they did not move forward with the, the deep um sewer lateral fee. Um, at that time, council encouraged staff to um review the fee um and work with interest groups, including the Realtors Group before coming back and um, and presenting again, which we're moving towards right now. So since that time, um, the city staff have met with um uh, as requested by the Realtors Group, we met with um local contractors who do this type of work. So we met with a number of contractors and kind of um talked with them about, hey, what are options that we could look at to keep the cost down as far as sewer lateral installations go? Because everybody's interested. We're definitely interested in keeping costs as low as possible for these. So what can we do to work with um to, to bring costs down? And the contractors had a few suggestions. Um, the main one of which was to eliminate the Y connection to the main. So Y connection to the main, that's where the lateral connects to the main itself. Our previous detail had a section of the main that would be replaced um in order to have that connection go in and be fully plastic onto the main. So we um, we made a determination that that would be one way that we could bring down costs. Um, that would mean that that would have to be done if the city were to go in and do a main project, they would have to replace that section of main um during that project. So it kind of shifts. That work still has to be done at some point. Um, it just shifts it from being a part of the private sewer lateral to being part of the public main. Um, so we made that modification and we included that modification in our twenty-twenty-five annual sewer lateral project bid. Um, that bid was opened here in the last couple of months. Um, since that time, we met with the Realtor groups a few times, um, twice with the sewer la- the lateral subcommittee and listened to concerns, answered questions and discuss, discussed options for the fee. Um, with our twenty-twenty-five project, we calculated a new fee-in-lue based on three years. Um, the, the three years, we've only had three years where we've actually put out a, a annual lateral project. So over those three years, we averaged what our, our bid item costs for lateral installations were. Um, and then we averaged the cost over a three-year period. So um, a number of averages there. So we wanted to arrive at one fee versus having multiple fees for deep and shallow, requiring a lot of extra, you know, try to keep it as simple as possible um and fair as possible. A fee for a non-standard installation was discussed um during that time. Uh, clarifying, you know, that the city engineer would estimate the cost of installation and that would be the cost for the fee-in-lue for a non-standard installation. So that's what you see in the fee schedule now is that um, that non-standard being clarified in there and uh basically that estimate that we put together in, in the city engineer's office becomes like, that's what we're going to move the, the project ahead with and uh, and move that forward and whatever then that ends up costing in the end, that'll be something that's bared on the city's project moving forward. Uh, fee-in-lue calculation. So this, this is the calculation, trying to be as clear um and, and with everyone. Um, this calculation was provided to the, the Realtors Group um and hasn't, the only change that we've had since then is we, we've rounded down from what the actual um cost would be, the nine thousand forty-eight dollars um with a, a twen- that, that includes that twenty percent contribution from the city's um enterprise fund. We rounded that down to, to nine thousand for a clean number that's easy for people to deal with. Um, so that's a, a twenty. So basically, we're including a more of an enterprise contribution to the fee there. So this is what the fee schedule looks like currently. Um, I'll start at the top with the red. Um, there's a section here um with the four thousand that says installation of new sewer laterals. So that is a holdover fee that was in the, the fee schedule prior to there ever being a, a fee-in-lue or sewer lateral ordinance. Um, that fee was to have city staff go out and install a lateral um at, for a new, for a new installation. And um, that doesn't seem to make as much sense now considering that we're making, that everybody else who's doing, um, going through the lateral program, they don't have that option to use the four thousand. Um, it also really reflects that our staffing, our sewer crews aren't really manned up in order to do that as well. Um, we've kind of shifted resources that way. So um, we've gotten rid of this, that, so that's out of there. The standard shallow installation has been um removed. Um, the other um inspection cost there is out as well. So now we're down to basically two fees. There's a standard installation at nine thousand dollars, as we've talked about the calculation prior previously. And then there's also a non-standard, um, non-standard installation, installation, which we talked about. Um, basically, um, where we do a design, we estimate the cost of a non-standard installation that may not be out in front of the house. It may go down the alley. It may take a turn down the street. Um, where very few instances have that, but those instances, they need to be designed and they're not a standard, you know, the, a project couldn't bear the sort of cost for a non-standard situation like that. So that's what the um cost schedule looks like for those. I would say we will continue to pursue funding, um, as we talked about previously. Um, at this, from the state level and any opportunity we can to bring in funding to try to help um alleviate the burden on some of these costs for the sewer system, whether it's the collection system, whether it's the treatment plant. You know, we're, we are always looking for opportunities. Um, it just seems like there's probably a lot of um cities across the state of California in their similar situation that we are. Um, struggling with, you know, ongoing maintenance, um, changing stricter regulations. Um, so it's, it's definitely not something the City of Eureka is alone in having to manage. And thank you, and we'll field questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Director Willer. Uh, really just a couple of questions. The first is, you showed that chart of the three years of costs. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. And I noticed in twenty-four, uh, it looked like the, the lowest cost for, for whatever, the easiest kind of sewer lateral replacement was three thousand and in twenty-five it was ten thousand. Um, was there, was that, what, what's the difference in the cost there? You know, I know we were using a outside contractor, I believe, for that, so.
Yeah, that's, excuse me, that's more of a, a bidding, a low bidder chose to put their bid schedule together. If you were to compare the bids for twenty-twenty-four, that was kind of an anomaly, so to speak. Like they had lower bids for the shallow laterals versus their deep laterals. Um, whereas most of the other bidders were almost uh at least twice as much as that um for the shallow installation. And then we saw, you know, this last year's bid, everything kind of um leveled out to a certain degree, I guess. So I'm not sure why that contractor chose to do a um, a, a different approach in bidding that item, but it wasn't anything that we changed as far as the plans, the specifications, the details or anything along those lines.
And so do you think, sorry, um, that part of the differences between twenty-four and twenty-five is that the folks realized that they couldn't actually do the laterals for that cost or?
I don't know the answer. It.
Yeah, I mean.
The year before, the costs were higher, then it went down, then it went back up, at least for those bid items for that particular contractor. The other contractors, it was pretty consistent.
Even, okay.
And you'll even see it on, whether it's a sewer project or, you know, a facilities project or whatever. Some contractors will put costs in certain places and reduce it in others. Why they do that, we can't really choose it. And, and then at the same time, you may have a contractor that's just more hungry than another contractor. A contractor could be busy and okay, I'm going to get this if it's worth the money, so my price is going to be a little bit higher type of thing. So we, we can't really control how they, how they bid.
For sure. Thank you. Um, and then um, and I appreciate the listing of the triggers. One of the things we've talked about in the past are opportunities in terms of, you know, if a road is being repaved, right? That's, though, that wouldn't necessarily trigger the, this, this one would have to replace their lateral then. It would be one of the easiest opportunities to replace a lateral because the road's already torn up and, and so it might save cost and in that sense. Is there still the opportunity for someone to voluntarily decide to replace their, the lateral then? And how, how would that happen? And would the fees be, would that sort of in some ways fall into a non-standard installation that would then be, uh, the fees would be set, you know, by the city engineer? Or how, how would that work?
Um, I think that if you're talking about like, if you're doing like a street project, a street maintenance project and somebody wanted to get in while the road was torn up.
Exactly.
Um, or before it was repaved and didn't want to come in after, because we do have a, a moratorium on cutting up the roads after we, after we freshly paved them because we want to really discourage, you know, damaging our new pavements out there. So that certainly would always encourage people to like plan ahead. Um, I don't think it would necessarily change the price, the, um, the fee schedule, so to speak, but I, I'm not.
I think what she's, what Councilmember Castellano was saying is if they were to choose to do that, that doesn't automatically, I'm trying to answer this question at the same time, so sorry, but just because they're choosing to do it outside of the regular process, it's not a non-standard. If somebody chose to do that and they had a deep lateral that was a regular lateral out in the middle of the street on the main, the costs would be the same and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the non-standard that would require an engineer's estimate. It would still be the nine thousand.
Correct, yeah.
Would, would they be able to hire someone on their own accord at that time and then they wouldn't be worried about the city fees whatsoever?
Yeah, that's why we put it in there as an option. I think that's why he highlighted it. Nobody's required, if somebody's selling their home, they're not required to use the city's fee-in-lue. They can go and replace the upper and lower on their own and they don't have to go through us. They just need to receive a certificate.
Yeah.
I, I will say that during, um, we've done sewer main projects before where the city's actually installing the lower. We've really, we've encouraged neighbors um to talk to the contractor who's already on site doing that work to see if they can also take on their upper while they're there, if they're required to do it, or just, hey, we want to get ahead of it. You have a, um, a Class A contractor who's there doing the street project. Um, so we've encouraged the contractor to reach out to the homeowners, to talk to the homeowners about reaching out. And so trying to give people an opportunity where you have somebody right there in your front door, maybe get a better price on doing the upper, but that's just encouragement. That's no.
Yeah.
Requirement.
Yeah, and I think uh, the thing that I'm curious about in that instance is, you know, how can we facilitate that communication better perhaps when roads are being repaved and, you know, for sure, it wouldn't be a requirement then, but you know, for myself as a homeowner, I would want to take, you know, take that opportunity to potentially, you know, save costs later on by, you know, doing it when the road's torn up and, and working, you know, working that in.
Yeah, and we are, I, I think, I guess, one answer to that question or maybe one resource, um, we have, you know, every year we try to project out what our next five years as streets are going to be and they, they kind of, you know, they, they do change through time as priorities change and things come up. But, you know, um, having that list of kind of streets that are coming in the future. I mean, maybe we can pull it out of the CIP and make it more accessible on the sewer lateral page of like future um streets to be paved if somebody wants to be proactive and try to get out of heading, knowing that a project's coming along in the next five years.
Okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you for the informative presentation. I know in the past, uh, we've asked, and I think part of the issue is difficult to ascertain with the data is whether or not, how do we determine how many laterals we've replaced in the city? Are we able to do that? Well, not so much, uh, how many we've replaced. I'm sure we have that number, but, but rather how many still require some sort of replacement?
Yeah, that's a number we can, I mean, we can come up with a fairly good estimate. The thing that we just went through this, we went through an evaluation project the last two years. So we basically diverted money that we would typically put to doing sewer main projects. And we said, okay, we have this requirement by our consent decree. We're gonna do a project to take care of this evaluation. They required us to CCT camera the entire system to evaluate it for, um, conditions. We had to do a PACP condition evaluation, smoke test, all the mains. Um, so we were able to gather a lot of data from that. So we're still finishing the last project right now, but that data, we intend to use that to really put together a good database of what we have in the system. Because in the past, what we had was paper maps that came from as-built from seventy years ago, where somebody hand drew in what looked like very standard offsets for where laterals were. And it's like, those don't tend to be in the right place. So it was difficult to say from our as-built from the, you know, fifty to a hundred years ago, what was actually in the ground. Um, so now we've gone out, we've camered the entire city, or we're almost done, we're almost done smoke testing. So we're almost there to the point where we have that data that we can say, we know where the laterals are, how many we have. Um, we don't have the condition index of all of them, but we can say that we know how many we've replaced and we know how many remain. How many are gonna be required to be repaired? That might be difficult to get our hands on to not knowing, you know, having, um, reviewed the condition of those laterals.
And then you had touched on, or at least the, uh, the presentation had showed that the, the city doesn't have the capacity to replace laterals. And so what is, what is it that's missing then from, from that element? Is there anything that the city could do differently then to provide that service?
Yeah, so, I mean, it would take a, I think, a large increase in your maintenance forces in order to be able to go out there and do that. Um, I couldn't, I mean, I could, I could speculate as to, you know, would we have to double or, you know, really, really increase on the sewer side, the number of people that we would need out there for the city, double, triple. That also would come along with equipment needs, um, batcons. Um, so, you know, um, vacuum trucks are very expensive. Um, all the equipment that goes into that, it would, it would kind of change the operation, uh, the way that our, um, sewer maintenance group works significantly.
Because again, I don't know how long your tenure has been with the city, uh, and, and I know our, uh, our city manager has only been the city manager since after this ordinance was passed, but we were able to do this at one point prior to 2019, correct?
Uh, yeah, prior to 2019, we did, um, replacements for new. That's what that, um, the new lateral, um, was like, if you had a new lateral that you wanted, there was a fee that you could do to have a new lateral installed. Um, when it came to, if you had a back, if you had an issue with your main, then that was still a plumber. You would need to take care of your upper. Um, if there was a, an overflow or some issue, sometimes we'd get involved in the lower because, you know, we're trying to deal with a health, um, and safety concern.
But I think what you're referring to, Councilmember Fernandez, is when we did work before, as far as the lower laterals are concerned, that was as a part of a main project and that was done by a contractor even before that. So we had staff doing new installs. But when we would replace a main, we replaced the laterals along that line as well. And that was a part of a contract, not a part of our staff doing it. It was a part of the, the main replacement contract.
Okay. And so then how was it done prior to that, uh, understanding that the city wasn't the one to replace it, but to contract it out?
So we, we did that based on the need to replace the main. And we figured if we're gonna be ripping up the street, we might as well do the lower lateral at the same time. And so that was a part of, we never had a lateral maintenance program prior to our consent decree and prior to our new permit.
It was just done on an ad hoc basis?
Yeah, it was done on the basis of this main's been here since nineteen forty and it's leaking and we need to replace it. So while we're replacing it, we're gonna replace all the laterals along with it. It had nothing to do with the laterals themselves, unless of course, like City Engineer Willer said, there's a, a break in it or, or some.
There wasn't a driver for people to have to replace their, their laterals previously. So there was just a lot less laterals being replaced out there. You know, so just, there wasn't the same volume at, at all, I think, for, for the individual, you know, homeowner versus, you know, a city main project where we're looking at, you know, usually pretty impacted mains and, and portions of the collection system.
Okay. Because, yeah, I see, I, I, I see it as, as hollow, maybe, maybe specious, but the idea that the lower lateral goes past the property line and into the public right of way from my perspective and connects to the larger sewage system, it's, it's a public health and welfare issue. And so did the, did the approving council at the time not consider what the cost may be if it were spread out to ratepayers?
They, they didn't choose that as an option. We could look at that and, and we could get an idea of what that number is and what it would look like spread out over the entire rate base.
Okay. And, okay, thank you.
And at that time, it could be determined, and I'm getting way far ahead and speculating, but at that time, if that was decided to do that, there would be maybe a decision, okay, is it cheaper to do this, you know, via contract or via staffing? And what does that look like for the rate review? And what does that look like for, you know, across-the-board rate costs? You know, would we hire twice the amount of staff in order to do this? Or would we do this as a part of a bunch of main projects throughout? It, it would be significant though, and a, a significant amount of money, um, if we went that way.
Okay. And then, now, my last piece here is, you had touched on the point of sale-trigger inspection, which, which makes sense. The last thing you want is, you know, effluent building up in your house or, uh, anything along those lines. But, but how is it that this inspection occurs when there's, uh, fifty thousand dollar or greater work permit needed? How would a new roof and gutter system, let alone a new kitchen, require the need for the inspection of a sewer system?
Um, it's just the threshold, um, of a building permit that was set. Um, we looked at across the state of California and kind of tried to look at where other cities had set this. Again, we're not alone in this, you know, this is something that's happened before. Um, so that tended to be, um, you know, s, an, an average or a lower average that we've, that we felt. And there was discussion with council about that, that amount, you know, as far as like building permits go. And that was the recommendation that was made at the time. But it wasn't set, um, based on, you know, it was looked at from the amount of work that's going on with a building permit, because surely that's an additional cost that's pretty significant, you know, if you have to replace it. You know, this just basically triggers you to have to have the CCTV work. But, um, clearly there's a lot of, uh, you know, majority of the laterals in the city are, um, vitrified clay. So, you know, the, the likelihood of you having it replaced, it's pretty high. Um, the program is there to encourage laterals to be replaced because we have this INI issue that we have to deal with at the treatment plant.
And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Willer, but public improvements in the right of way are, are that same fifty thousand, right? So sometimes you'll have a property that's making improvements to their house and that say there's not a sidewalk in front of their house. Um, if that reaches that threshold, which I believe is fifty thousand, we can require them to put in sidewalks, um, in front of their house as well.
Yeah, improvements to accessibility, whether it's, you know, typically it's accessibility improvements, uh, fixing driveways or curb returns or broken sidewalk, that sort of thing.
Okay. So that fifty thousand, and this obviously goes on to a tangent, but that fifty thousand threshold then also applies to, I, I think you said, other accessibility work. Or, it could. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from this end? Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, I had a question. I wanted clarification on something you mentioned earlier, uh, about a moratorium on cutting up roads after paving them. And I was wondering if you guys could explain to me what that means?
Sure. So, um, uh, we have a, a pavement, uh, gosh, what's it called? It's a, it's a street moratorium. Basically, we have, um, it's set, it's codified that they're for five years, um, after a street's paved, that, you know, if you're going to cut up the street, there's other standards that you have to adhere to, basically, meaning if you need to, um, for example, if we pave a street and PG&E comes in and say they want to put a new gas main in, then they can't just do like a regular trench width to do that. They have to, um, extend their, their limits in order to repair the pavement to a higher degree because, you know, it's, it's a brand new facility that we just installed. But the same thing would apply to any, um, cutting into a new pavement after we pave it. So if somebody goes out in a Myrtle and they, they want to put a, um, you know, they need to cut into Myrtle for whatever reason, whether it's a, one of our franchise utilities around here, or it's a, a lateral in this case, they would have to do a wider, um, patch through there in order to, uh, repair it to a higher level.
So in the cases of an individual owner, um, that needs to repair a sewer lateral, um, they, that, would that cost fall to them to do that paving?
If it's, if they're, if they're having, if they're not part of, yes, if, so if they're, I guess, if they choose to use a Class A contractor to do their work, then the patch would be wider than if the street hadn't been paved. And so therefore there would be a more cost. Typically, there's more cost associated with that because you're putting more asphalt, more saw cutting, more materials.
Okay. Um, when you guys paved H and I, um, right after it was paved, there were a whole bunch of places where people needed to cut back in. What was the reason for that?
There was a few different things going on there. Um, one of the issues was, um, we had, I think due to the construction, um, part of the sewer main where we had some issues with the sewer main had some failures. I think you'll see kind of a, a series of patches going down the center lane. Um, so that's what those patches were there from is, you know, a lot of vibratory compaction happening on the roadway and loosening up underneath where that, um, vitrified clay main goes through there. But then there also were a couple of patches that were cut in there, um, I think for sewer laterals at the time.
That was a question that I had. Um, I think going back to that, when I'd asked, somebody had explained to me that vibratory compaction, basically the idea that it got jiggled and failed. And so then it needed to be repaired. What I'm wondering about that.
Just to be clear, it was the, it was the wastewater infrastructure that got jiggled and needed to be repaired when, because of the equipment being used to pave.
Why is that distinction important right now?
Uh, because I thought you were saying it was the equipment causing the road to fail, cause the.
No, not causing the road to fail. I guess, um, I wanted to make sure I asked the questions first. My question would be, when we're paving the street, because I remember what happened out on H and I, what is the, has this already happened and what is the likelihood that we could cause somebody's sewer lateral because of the compaction vibration or vibration compaction, I apologize? What are, what is the likelihood of that causing someone's sewer lateral then to potentially fail and need to be replaced where we're basically causing the problem as the city?
Yeah, we don't, um, I guess it's a couple of different ways to look at it. The, um, the ones that we saw, for example, the ones where we got in and made the repairs ourselves, because I can tell you that, because we camered them and looked at them before, or, or, you know, before we went and did the repair to try to figure out like what's going on, why did this fail, right? Like we do our evaluation. And it looked like it wasn't so much that the pipe had cracked and failed and that the main needed to be repaired, but it, um, you know, vitrified clay pipe has, you know, they have joints that are about every, so far. And those joints over fifty, a hundred years, the sealant that goes inside the joint degrades, no longer exists any longer. So that can, those joints can kind of separate, whether differential separate, uh, settlement of the, of the ground, or they kind of get pulled apart, jiggle loose. Um, those had caused voids to likely be over top of the main, um, from se, fine sediments going into those joints. Then you roll a big, heavy vibratory plate compactor over top of that. You're basically like sending compacted effort down there and it fills any voids i- in that area and that causes it to fail. So we didn't see so much of breaks in our main as far as like damage to the pipe itself, as in those voids basically collapsing in when we rolled vibratory equipment over top of them.
So we're not causing, by repaving streets, we're not causing, uh, citizens sewer main or sewer laterals, excuse me, things that they would be on the hook for replacing? We're not causing the failure of those?
I haven't seen that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano?
Just two, two question, follow-up questions. Um, the first one related to Councilmember Contreras Deluge's questions. Um, generally speaking, ha, have you seen any like newly replaced sewer laterals fail, uh, from the result of street improvements? It's like once they're re, replaced and new, they're, they're good?
Yeah, we haven't seen any.
Okay, great. And then the other question is, I know this, but just so it's really clear, um, you know, if we don't have building owners pay for sewer lateral replacements, then basically we have to pass the cost. I mean, we have to, it has to be paid for somehow, right? Like we don't just, we don't, unfortunately, we just don't have access to unlimited money. And so it would have to be co, passed on to ratepayers, generally speaking, um, which would be, you know, more renters, more people who maybe aren't benefiting from home ownership.
That could be the case, yeah.
It, it would be across the entire rate paying base, yes.
Great, okay.
Both commercial and residential.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you. And then for this fee in lieu increase, is there, is there any cap to it? I mean, the difference from eight thousand to nine thousand is about twelve and a half percent. So is there any cap to that percentage increase?
It'll continue to be based off the previous three years of, of averages. Now, I mean, a lot of things can change. As we talked to the Realtors about this, there are technologies that are out there that aren't necessarily up here that could significantly reduce these costs. And if there was a, I don't know if my mic just went out, but if there was a contractor that got into that, that could totally change this. But we would still average. So let's say next year we came in and this trenchless technology came in and they came in and it ended up being four thousand dollars, um, you know, per lateral, we'd still average the previous two years, you know, plus that four thousand. So yes, technology can change. Materials costs can change. Um, a lot of things could change to, to make that difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, we will open this public hearing for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that like, come, comment on that item? Come on up. Oh, welcome.
Um, hi. Um, I do have a few questions. I didn't see the report, thank you, really well. Um, so is there a possibility of getting a copy of that report or is it online?
It is online.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry. My name's Karen Gladine. Um, thank you for listening to me. Like I said, I've.
It will be online.
Been in front of you before. So I do have a few rentals. All are in the city. Um, I recently sold one March and I, that's when I learned about the sewer upper and lower laterals. Um, the inspection fee, review fee with the city was cool. That was like two hundred bucks. Um, my sticker shop came when I discovered that I need to replace both of them and they were four thousand dollars each. So the fee in lieu, I think, was just for the lower lateral and that was the four. Um, the contractor I went with gave me a discount because he did both. So that was good. Um, my question, uh, let's see, is, um, when the city goes into an area and does repairs to either the main, if they're having to do sewer laterals, are they charging each homeowner, property owner, the fee? Or is the fee basically just on the, like the person who's selling the property? Am I paying a higher fee because not everybody gets charged?
So we don't answer questions during public comment, but you could certainly email them.
Okay.
Or perhaps you can ask them now, yeah.
Okay, um, so the, I guess that's it then, because the other ones are about the main. I guess that's it. Okay, um, yeah, I'd just like to see the report and I do have questions. I guess I'll get with the city on that. Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
I think, um, your last comment probably illustrates most people's worries about this. Um, you said that, uh, if a new technology contractor came in with a new technology and was able to do these for four thousand, that you would still charge at average of the last three years, even though the old technology is no longer being used. Um, that seems to me like a irresponsible way to go about it. If a guy comes in that can do it for four thousand, why don't you, why don't we, you know, why don't you charge us four thousand? You know, instead of galloping us for old technology. So, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else in chambers who cares to comment on this item? You can also line up on the side of the room if there are more people that are interested in commenting.
Hello, I'm Susie Smith and I am on the Board of Directors with the Humboldt Association of Realtors. And I am reading into the record a letter that we sent to you all on June third. And this is, the Humboldt Association of Realtors is advocating that you, as a council, adopt the following fee. And this is the Humboldt Association of Realtors is advocating that you, as a council, adopt the following fees for lower lateral rehab replacement to the point of triggering to the point out of triggering event for a minimum of the next five years. So we ask that the private sewer lateral rehab replacement fee in lieu be four thousand dollars for a standard shallow installation. For a standard deep installation, we would like it to be eight thousand dollars. And the non-standard installation fee in lieu cap at eight thousand dollars, regardless of what the actual cost is. There are several reasons why we advocate for these special capped charges for the citizens of Eureka. A major issue is the current uncertainty that when you are selling or buying a property in Eureka, as soon as you initiate the sewer lateral certification application process, you may be writing a blank check to the city for your lower lateral, not including how much you will need to pay your private plumber for the upper lateral work if required. It is rare to see a homeowner pay less than forty five hundred to five thousand dollars for the upper lateral alone. Another inequity is when the city has already installed a sidewalk cleanout and a lower lateral by way of repair of an improvement project, which you had talked about a moment ago. That property owner now has at least eight thousand dollars in equity at a minimum over another Eureka property owner that did not have the city funded project. We also advocate that if the city of Eureka had a crew on staff to replace lower laterals, contractors would not have to be hired. Therefore, prevailing wages would not have to be paid and the cost of replacement would be less for property owners or at the point of sale. We included several more reasons in our letter from Attorney Owens dated March third, twenty twenty five, and attached with this letter. You may hear from staff that the methodology of their proposed fee is fair based on what the private contractor cost to replace lower laterals will be and that the city is still absorbing twenty percent of the actual cost by only charging eight or twelve thousand by the engineering quote. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, my name's Victoria Copeland. I'm a resident and a business owner in Eureka. I just, you know, I'm task force member. I really do thank Miles and Jesse for meeting with us. And it's just been rough going. I mean, we want one thing and they're advocating for another. And we're understanding that there needs to be a point of sale of inspection from the wording of the consent decree. But there doesn't have to be a lower lateral paid for by the property owner. I mean, I can understand an inspection of the line. I still don't understand why a perfectly good asbestos pipe fails. I don't understand why, you know, a PVC pipe that might have just a little bit of a belly will fail. There's a lot of things that when we're actually, you know, boots on the ground, trying to get this done in a forty five day period, there's a lot of just still some pretty ridiculous stuff that happens. But you guys do have the power to say, you know what, let's make the in lieu fee four thousand and we'll come up with the rest. I mean, we clearly see when the city has something that they want to pay for, you find the money to do it. There's several things later on the agenda that that prove that in the in the millions of dollars. So, you know, again, you guys have the ability to set the fee in a reasonable equitable way for property owners. Again, just us seeing all the fees that are going up, there's so many building permit fees going up and even just by a little. But all of those little fees impact the cost of housing. They really do. And, you know, this issue of the of the sewer infrastructure in the city of Eureka is nothing new. Ryan Burns wrote a great article in the North Coast Journal on December thirty first of two thousand nine. There was a lot of funny money going back and forth between the rehabilitation arm of the city versus other pots of money. It's just been really interesting and like right now, from what I can tell, there's about three point five million dollars sitting there that's been collected so far. But but again, enterprise spends, it doesn't have to just be the twenty percent contribution from the city. It could be fifty fifty for the lower lateral to and that would still comply with the consent decree. And then I know you guys had also asked for you wanted to hear from people, from residents. So we put a little packet together. There's actually four letters from residents in these packets. Six of them there. But, you know, again, there's more than one way to reach a common goal. And maybe eighty twenty isn't equitable, maybe something more like fifty fifty is. And also, just with the contractors who are bidding, we'll have a contractor who could probably do the lower lateral for thirty five hundred. But he says, well, I'm going to charge you eight because otherwise you're just going to have to pay eight to the city. So would you rather pay me or would you rather pay the city? So we got issues.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm with Meintre Realtors, but I am a city of Eureka resident. And I just wanted a couple of points. I do think that the city should employ their own crew. That's half the cost of what we do when you were, you know, bidding it out. I mean, if we had our own crew, I think it's would only be fair for the city residents to have that done. And then on the renters paying for the city sewer, most of the renters are paying the rent. They're not paying for water and sewer. They're paying for the rent. I mean, and the landlord pays for the water and sewer. In most, I mean, I would say in most cases, not all, but most. Because I am a landlord as well and I pay for all my sewer lateral or sewer and water. And then another point I wanted to bring up is the the cost of the city is already accumulating for the sewer lateral every month. It's when we calculated it out in our little crew that we have figuring this all out, we figured out that the city is getting over a one point one million dollars a month just on sewer lateral fees, not including the water. So where's all that money going? I mean, I know we all have bills, but that seems like a heck of a lot of money. And that's almost over thirteen million dollars a year just for the sewer. And I'm like, what are we doing? So that's all I got. Just want to put it out there. Thank you.
Tina Christensen with Colwell Banker Cut and Realty and also on H A R's Board of Directors and on this sewer task force, which we've been meeting week after week after week. Met with Miles, Jesse, and they've been great. I understand the issues. I think that what has happened in the past is the past. But I think that you have a responsibility to look at the figures that Brenda just talked to you about. Thirteen million dollars a year, or if it's ten million dollars a year, where's that money going? You know, we sent in a lot of requests for additional information on some of these things. And some of them responded to, some of them, you know, I know how this works. Some of them, you don't get your answers to, got to wait a month out or two months out. But one of them is you have a responsibility in your budget to find out where that money went. And we would like to know as participants in this city where all of the sewer lateral money went, if you're charging thirteen million dollars a year. You got to have a budget for that and where does it go? So I think the citizens have a right to those answers. And I also think that the sewer laterals that these property owners have only contribute ten percent of the problem. It's your sewer mains, it's water intrusion into the manholes and all of that. We're only ten percent. So I think that you have to come up with something that's more equitable. Yes, you had a lawsuit. Yes, you lost the lawsuit. But there are ways to work, as Victoria spoke. You know, there's inequities in what is happening and I think we all need to come together and realize that and work for something for the citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you doing tonight? I wrote down what I was going to say because I would forget. My name is Christine Tyson. I am the Chair of the Government Relations Committee for the Humboldt Association of Realtors. And I also serve on the association's sewer lateral committee. I know I've shared a lot of my concerns with many of you personally and we have been, like Tina said, meeting with staff. Thank you, Jesse and Miles for taking your time to meet with us. Tonight, I'm here to speak not only for myself and my business as a Realtor, but on behalf of the association and many local property owners we represent regarding the proposed increase to the fee in lieu for lower sewer laterals. I respectfully urge you to reconsider the this increase. It would place yet another financial burden on homeowners, buyers and sellers, especially those already struggling to afford housing in our community. For many of these fees significantly reduce the equity that people spend years building. Equity that is often vital for major life transitions, like downsizing, retiring or passing on assets to family. That's if they even have equity left after everything else. And it's important to remember that this fee doesn't even cover the costs of the upper laterals, which lately have been almost relatively the same as the lower. I just had one two weeks ago that cost sixteen thousand dollars. Most for most properties, again, that they're anywhere between sixteen and up to thirty thousand dollars during a transaction. This is an enormous burden for the citizens of Eureka. Additionally, I want to raise a growing concern regarding the non-standard installation fee. This fee, which may be applied in certain cases, creates even more uncertainty for buyers and sellers. Not having a clear or consistent number to work with during a transaction complicates negotiations and can stall or even delay deals. Sellers don't know what they're, you know, on the hook for and buyers don't really know, you know, they don't want to move forward if they don't have a certain cost. It adds confusion on an already sensitive process and creates challenges for all parties involved. Having a cap for a non-standard fee would make these situations more attainable. We fully understand the importance of maintaining our infrastructure. We're not disputing that tonight. But there must be a more balanced and predictable way to achieve that goal without disproportionately impacting individual property owners. And frankly, we're really concerned that this is just the beginning. Like Miles had mentioned earlier, every year, these fees will go up based on the three years prior. And it doesn't seem like there's a long term plan to stabilize any of these costs to citizens of Eureka. We respectfully ask that you pause and work towards the more equitable, transparent and sustainable approach, one that supports the city infrastructure while protecting
Thank you, Christine.
of Eureka residents. Thank you.
My name's Barbara Cattlecheck. I'm with Colwell Banker Sellers Realty. And I'm also on the task force for sewer laterals. I've done a lot of contacting with agencies, state agencies. And I recognize that grants aren't available right now to Eureka, but I'm going to ask you to think outside the box. Take a different approach. And I know one of the things that was mentioned to me, yes, there is financing available. And think about individuals as they get ready to sell their houses and they may encounter other other repairs other than sewer lateral. And so the the amount of monies that are deducted from what they expect to move on with their lives can be greatly affected. I'm suggesting to you a public works project that is financed. And what I'm asking you to do is think about, okay, right now you have an individual that's facing a huge cost. I've talked among people. What they've told me is they would like to see a monthly fee so that when they get ready to sell their property, they do not have to face a large debt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in chambers who cares to comment in this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom. Ellen?
Hi, City Council. So yeah, I'm a homeowner in Eureka. I'm wondering why this huge fee, I mean, it jumps out at you in this fee schedule, is being approved potentially as part of this larger package rather than on its own as seems warranted by the size of it and the comments so far. Also, I'm sure you guys know that the median household income in Eureka is around sixty thousand dollars per year, according to the latest census. Nine thousand dollars is a lot of money and will be cost prohibitive for many current homeowners, threatened threatening to make the homelessness problem here much worse. And a couple of nitpicky things, if I don't think it's nitpicky, nine thousand dollars. If I maintain my home perfectly, I may still end up on the hook for nine thousand dollars if the city decides to replace the main line that my lateral connects to. How in the world is that fair? And I've I've heard this idea floating around that this fee is equitable because it only affects property owners. But yeah, the sewers working is definitely a public good. I really agree with that suggestion of making this a public works project because y'all don't want my sewer line to be backing up. My neighbors don't want that. The street crews don't want that. Nobody wants that. So and, you know, all of us property owners have lateral sewer lines. So if you guys are going around fixing mains, and, you know, whenever, you know, our houses get old and eventually we have to do some repairs, we're all going to have to pay this fee. But then what if we can't? What if this is too exorbitant? And my sewer does start to back up? What happens then? Is there going to be a lien on my property? Am I going to get foreclosed on? Again, if Eureka is serious about tackling our homelessness issue, this seems like a really bad idea and I really want to encourage you to to not pass this tonight. Just take it out. It needs to be its own thing. And it needs to be not nine thousand dollars for a homeowner. I mean, that is just a recipe for people getting kicked out of their homes. Thanks.
Thank you. You see anyone else?
I see no one else.
Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion and a second and then discussion. Want to make a motion and then ask your question?
Have to find my way to it. I don't do this often, so yeah, go ahead, Leslie. Just trying to find the staff recommendation, that's
Okay, I was just gonna. I move to hold a public hearing, continue from July first, twenty twenty five, and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka, establishing various fees and service charges within the City of Eureka. Second.
Great. Councilmember Fernandez, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did for staff. I know that one of the commenters had brought up that water, if not sewage, both potentially are paid for by landlords. I think I'm misinformed on that. I know garbage is considered a basic service, but water and sewage are not correct.
It can be done either way. It can be done by the lease with the tenant and the landlord. Some of them cover those costs. Some of them have the landlord and tenant.
But there's no city mandate. There's no ordinance dictating that. Okay, thank you. And then just following that, the only reason I wasn't a second on this is because I am likely to vote no on the sewer lateral portion fee increase. But I would approve the package overall.
Councilmember Contra Estelos?
Yeah, I I had a question. May I ask one question? I just based off of a public comment that was made, I just wanted to ask really quickly. Do you know, and this might be a question for City Manager Slattery or possibly City Clerk Pam Powell, have we had any Public Records Act requests about the sewer lateral that have not been fulfilled or that are currently waiting?
I think there's some, Pam, I'm sorry.
I would need to check our spreadsheet, but our paralegal has responded to everyone. There may have been voluminous documents that we're producing on a rolling basis. I would just have to check.
Yeah, I think that the ones that haven't met the ten day timeframe have been notified to the the quester that we're doing. Yeah, I think that the ones that haven't met the 10-day timeframe have been notified to the requister that we're doing an extension because of the amount of information that's being asked for. But they're on top of, you know, whatever's been... Some of them have met that 10-day timeframe. Some of them have such a voluminous amount of information that we need an extension on that.
Okay. Yeah, I know that sometimes they can be, as you said, voluminous. I am in this similar position. I'm okay approving the other things, but I would also be a no on the sewer lateral.
Councilmember Castellano?
For my fellow councilmembers who are not approving of the sewer lateral fees, I would be curious for them to state their positions in terms of alternatives to these fees. I myself, you know, I mean, no one wants to, you know, raise fees in general. Just to say, it's not like we're like, hey, let's raise fees on people so we can, you know, add strain to the public, right? You know, we all also have to pay these same fees at different points in time. You know, I personally am not in favor of passing them on to ratepayers. And so, you know, I would be supportive of, you know, I mean, right, we can pass this now and then continue to get more information, as we've already done several times, you know, in the history, in the ongoing history of this situation that no one's really happy with, honestly. You know, in terms of, I think it would be great to get a future report on the cost of having our own crew. That means, but in the meantime, we also need to, you know, support the cost of the program. You know, and I do think that as someone who's experienced, you know, the street in front of my, where I live, being replaced, and, you know, I do think that there's some opportunity to improve that communication around road repair and lateral, and the opportunity to replace laterals, and so that's something I would like to also bring back. But in the meantime, I do think that, you know, we need to move forward with this.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Right, so I was asked if I could better explain myself, and I do find that 80/20 is fair, and I understand there's issues out there about equitability. I don't know how I quite feel about saying it's inequitable. And I understand the worry of the cost being tacked on to ratepayers. I mean, regardless, that's gonna get passed on to renters and those experiencing other issues, finding any sort of permanent housing. I would rather that this public utility, at least through its usage for a public good, be a shared cost. And that's not something I know we can rectify tonight. I know it's something we've talked about over the last maybe year, which is that, you know, we need to review our sewer lateral ordinance, and that needs to be coupled with looking at the ratepayer study. So is it gonna be solved tonight? No, but I would rather not increase it if that were the case. So would it stay at 8,000? I'd be more comfortable with that, but I'd be even more comfortable with it not existing at all.
Councilmember Moulton?
So what happens if we don't increase this and the city continues to do the work and incur the costs of replacing these laterals?
So two things. So when the non-standard situations come up, because the lateral's in place, a non-standard situation would rely on the property owner to take that. There would be no 20% coverage of those non-standard. They would come in, it would be determined to be non-standard, and whatever those costs would be would have to be accrued by that property owner and done prior to the point of sale. If the regular standard fee does not go through, the older fee of $8,000 would continue to remain, and the cost for covering that would end up going on the ratepayers, and that percentage would be higher than the 20% that we're currently covering. At some point in time, if council continues, or would continue to choose to not raise that increase, it depends on what happens with the next bid. The next bid could come in. Depending on what that is, we'll average it again, and we'll come back with another number, and that's what the council-adopted ordinance requires staff to do.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I think we're... The fundamental piece of this for me is who owns a sewer lateral. And when I think about it, I think if that house was not there, there would be no connection to the public sanitary sewer. Therefore, that sewer, that specific piece of pipe is serving that house. And in my mind, that makes it the responsibility of that property owner. And as a property owner who has had to replace part of my sewer lateral before all of this happened, I can appreciate that owning a home can be quite a money pit. And I think that the city offering to transfer 20% of the average cost to other people who are not building equity in that property is incredibly generous.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, speaking to Councilmember Castellano's question, since I had indicated that I would be a no vote on the sewer laterals, you know, I've had, we've obviously had some time to kind of mull this over because I know none of us want anybody... None of us want to increase costs or rates of any kind, really. It's that we're trying to find the most equitable decision, and the debate up here really is between how we think it's most equitable. Because it seems that that is the issue that's concerning all of us, is how do we do this equitably, with as little harm as possible, and we have this cost. So my thoughts on this, you know, I had mentioned, I think it was at the March meeting, that my initial thought and my initial concern was having, you know, renters potentially paying the, you know, having, if we spread this cost, that we would have renters potentially paying this for people who own homes. I've thought that that was flawed and faulty within about 20 minutes of saying it. And the reason why is because every tax fee, et cetera, that is laid at the feet of a landlord is absolutely passed on to renters. First of all. I think the other thing, too, is the framework that I was using is also faulty because that would presuppose that anybody who owns a property is automatically in a position of privilege, which is false. And that anybody who is a renter is in a position of disadvantage, which is also false. There's a number of reasons why people would be in either of those categories. But that doesn't have, some of the highest income earners we have here are renters. There are traveling doctors and nurses. There's a number of reasons, excuse me, why that isn't actually a way for us to calculate it. I think another thing, too, is I worry about this potentially, so I worry about this potentially incentivizing landlords actually to avoid expensive or needed repairs and upgrades to avoid triggering potential costs that they don't feel like they have to go into. I, and so I think that's... You know, without having numbers, I think we've asked, you know, how many in Eureka have been done, how many are left, and that kind of thing. And we still are kind of missing, like, concrete numbers on things. We don't have any kind of concrete estimation on if we took this on as a city or how we took it on as a city. And I think those are all still things, and I realize this is still just continuing to push it down the line. But I think for myself, that's all data points that I would need to have to feel more comfortable in making this decision, and we just don't have them yet. And I really appreciate staff working with everything that we currently have and going over all of that and meeting with everybody. I realize there's a lot of time that's been invested in that, but I still don't feel like we're answering those questions yet. And as for how would we pay for it? With other large projects, we've done capital improvement projects, or we've looked at how are we going to finance something? For example, how are we gonna finance a new ops complex? You know, what serves the citizens of Eureka more? We could debate on that new ops complex or redoing the structure beneath the city. I don't know, there's a number of different ways to look at it. But without the numbers and without us having a hard estimate, I don't know. But that would be one potential way for us to consider that, the way that we consider other large improvement projects.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, and I do appreciate fellow councilmembers' responses to my inquiry. You know, I do want to just reiterate that we are talking about this fee being levied at the point of sale, which, you know, in an analysis of the Eureka housing market over the last 10 years, home sellers are doing quite well during that point. You know, we, for at least about a year, Eureka had one of the, you know, was in the top 10 housing markets in the US. You know, though selling prices have somewhat, you know, flattened in the last year, generally speaking, like, home sellers are doing very well at time of sale. So I do think it's actually the best opportunity to include the price of this with the sale of the house.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Just to note, it's not just a point-of-sale trigger, too. There's also the... Any permit that would be in excess of $50,000 for a job on that particular site. So it's more than just that particular point of sale.
I realize that, because that is the primary trigger.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, which, you know, depending on, you know, what needs to be done, you know, on a property that could include a variety of things, especially on any kind of apartment complex, including lower-income apartment complexes. But I believe it would also be triggered by somebody building an ADU or any kind of addition in that way. Is that incorrect?
No.
It wouldn't be triggered by...
Not the ADU. The ADU doesn't do it. Oh, it does? Oh, I apologize.
So, yeah, that was my understanding. So it is, right? An ADU would as well. Yeah, so I see that as a disincentive also for people, you know, potentially looking at ways to increase housing. So there's just a number of issues.
So if there's nothing further, please vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez and Councilmember Conchera Stiloch's dissent. Motion carries.
And with that, it is 8:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute break and be back. All right, this moves us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 211-22, if a member of the public would like an item in the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no discussion of these items. And as discussed earlier, F3 has been removed and will be heard on July 15th. And I've heard no other items to be pulled. So if we could get a motion?
I'll move to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Second.
Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to legislative action correspondence. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. I think probably all of us got a message from CalCities about SB 840, which is the cap-and-trade. It reauthorizes the cap-and-trade program at the State of California. And CalCities, our fellow cities across the state, are asking that we write a letter of support, and we have a sample letter, which I just got this, so, earlier today. But it's basically saying, we want you to make sure that we invest in capital projects of regional significance, regional transit agencies, trying to maintain service, increase services, you know, zero-emission vehicle transition, all these great things. I don't know how fast we need to do this, if this is something that can wait. Well, I guess it's only a week, right? So I would like to bring a letter back next week in support of SB 840 and just some of the things that are in there are really good for California, for our city.
So it looks like we have consensus on that matter. Thank you. This moves us to ordinances and resolutions. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a piece of legislation, or one that's gonna be coming up, that I wanted to ask about, or get council thought on it. It's Senate Bill 627, Jesse Erhuen and Scott Weiner. It's the No Secret Police Act. It's a request that they're putting forward to that law enforcement be clearly identifiable. I think, as everybody knows, there's, and we've seen, and heard unfortunately, that there are people who are posing as immigration officials and so forth because there isn't any kind of commonality in uniform requirement for badges. They can cover their faces with masks and other things like that. There are exemptions in this bill for a number of reasons for law enforcement, but overall, it is a request that they be able to provide clear identification so people know if they're being scooped up by an imposter or if they're being scooped up by somebody who is a legitimate law enforcement officer. For what it's worth, our former Chief of Police, Annie Mills, has talked about this online publicly in issued statements in support of this as well. And that it's critical also for law enforcement to be able to maintain trust within their communities and not be dealing with such an amplified level of fear that they are not able to work with their own community members. Thank you.
So we have a consensus. Okay. Anything further on legislative action? All right. Thank you. That moves us to ordinances and resolutions. Salary schedule update with Director Folger. Good evening. Microphone's not on, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, and welcome.
The city's salary schedule is routinely updated and approved by council as required by CalPERS regulations. When the salary schedule contains changes to executive salaries, it is a requirement that those changes are reported orally. The changes to the salary schedule reflect routine changes to the city's class and comp plan, including establishment of new classifications, pay rates, wage adjustments, and previously negotiated and approved salary increases, which include the 3% COLA that has gone into effect as of July 1st of this year, and will be applied to salary ranges for all permanent city classifications, including the salaries for the following executive positions. That is the City Manager, Chief of Police, Assistant City Manager, City Engineer, and all of the positions under the Director Series over Public Works, Development Services, Community Services, Finance, and Human Resources. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the city's updated salary and pay rate schedule for all regular full-time and regular part-time position titles and classifications to reflect these routine classification and compensation changes that have occurred and are effective July 1, 2025. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will bring it back to council for a motion and a second, and comments. Councilmember Moulton?
I'd like to move staff recommendation, please.
Second.
Any comments? Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Reports and action items. Joined exercise powers of agreement for Humboldt Bay Fire. Chief Citro? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I'm going to present the amended and restated joint powers agreement between the City of Eureka and the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District. Give you a little bit of a background on it and where we came from, the original agreement and where we are today. So a little bit of background history of the Humboldt Bay Fire Joint Powers Authority. This is one of just an example of what we used to look like as two separate agencies. The old ketchup and mustard days we used to call it. So a little bit of background of the City of Eureka Fire Department was established in 1864 and the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District was established in 1929. As you know, the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District protects the 40 square miles that completely surround the city of Eureka. Both agencies operated completely independently until 1991. And what I mean by independently is boundaries weren't crossed. Response routes were taken around city limits or district lines. Very separate organizations, even though they shared a common boundary all the way around. In 1991, there was something called a boundary drop automatic aid agreement that was established between the two agencies. And basically that we what that created was regardless of the political jurisdiction, the closest engine responded regardless. Give you an example. As you know, our fire station two, which is owned by the Humboldt Fire District, is up on Herrick Avenue. When I started in 1999, there were stories from people who worked for the district back in the seventies that they would watch a city engine go by their fire station on their way to Lumber Hills. So that's how separated they were. So we worked under this bounty drop auto eight agreement for quite some time. It's what was in effect when I started. We did do joint training, but we still had different training, still separate administrations, chiefs, boards, fire services, the whole works. During this time, two attempts at a joint fire services committee consisting of staff from both agencies was attempted in both 1993 and 2003 to make recommendations to the governing boards, the City Council and the Humboldt Fire District One Board of Ways to Consolidate Services. Those reports were forwarded to each governing body and neither of them resulted in any formative action taking place. In 2010, the Humboldt Fire District Number One Fire Chief was hired under contract by the City of Eureka as the chief of both agencies. That was the seed to where we are today in the joint powers agreement and consolidation between the two agencies. In 2011, City Gate and Associates, they're a firm. They conducted a consolidation study between the two agencies. And in 2011, the J P A was formed with the fire chief and a joint training officer being the first two employees of the J P A. In 2013, crews were mixed. And basically what that means is firefighters from the Humboldt Fire District and firefighters from the City of Eureka finally intermingled into each other's stations and started working together. That was a huge step. And then in January 2015, all the employees of the City of Eureka Fire Department and the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District all became employees of the Humboldt Bay Fire Joint Powers Authority. So Humboldt Bay Fire is a joint powers authority formed between the City of Eureka and Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District under the authority of the Joint Exercise Powers Act codified in California Government Code sixty-five hundred. The agreement was originally signed in 2011. And again, like I stated before, joint joint operations began in 2013. City Gate and Associates was the firm used to create the original J P A agreement. The agreement was updated in 2019 to include the fate of the original, what we call parent agencies employees, if there was ever a dissolution of the J P A. And in 2023, City Gate provided a plan update to address specifically the cost allocation plan that was in place from the beginning of the J P A until two years ago. The current cost, I'm sorry, the cost allocation formula is that is proposed in the new agreement is based on a five-year cost transition plan that was recommended by City Gate from the original cost share ratio of 65% City of Eureka to 35% Humboldt Fire District One to now 60% City of Eureka to 40% Humboldt Fire District One. And I can get into the specifics of those. The J P A approved the staff recommendation for the financial transition plan in 2024. And what we started at is what we called the transition process. Sixty-two and a half percent City of Eureka, thirty-seven and a half percent Humboldt Fire District for the first three years, and then we will move to sixty forty split beginning on year four. At the end of year two, which is where we are right now, this current fiscal year that just began, we are in year two of this transition plan. We will conduct a new analysis with staff to determine if the sixty forty split is still on track. And I can tell you, as of right now, it is on track and it may be even on track to be a year earlier. Director Millar, myself, and our businessman and general Jenna Harris will conduct that analysis here and present to the J P A board after mid-year budget and give a recommendation. This financial transition plan in the sixty forty split is pretty much based off the number of fire stations. Three in the City of Eureka, two in the Humboldt Fire District One, and that is referenced in the J P A agreement. That was the recommendation from City Gate when they came back in 2023, when we addressed the cost allocation formula and how to make it more equitable. The other big addition to the amended J P A agreement in front of you is one at large, fifth member will be jointly selected and recommended for appointment by the city manager and the district fire chief, myself acting as the district fire chief. And we will be the executive officers of each member making that recommendation. We have to agree. And then it will go to the J P A board, who must confirm by a majority vote of all the members, appointed by the members, the appointment of the at-large fifth member. And the reason for the fifth members currently, the J P A board consists of two members of the Eureka City Council and two members of the Humboldt Fire District Number One Board, giving us an even number. Fortunately, we haven't had any issues with split votes. We've had one that was not during my time, was before my time as the fire chief, but that got resolved, but it did take some time to resolve the issue. And that was in reference to the COVID mandate. So it was recommended that we create a fifth at-large member. So where are we today? So basically, what needs to occur for this agreement to take effect is each parent agency needs to approve the amended and restated J P A agreement. Legal counsel from both the city and the Humboldt Number One Fire District have reviewed and amended have reviewed this amended and restated agreement. It's gone through legal review. On June 11th, 2025, the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection Board Directors approved this amended and restated agreement with a unanimous vote. If approved tonight by city council, signatures will be gathered and the amended and restated agreement will go into effect. So the staff recommendation is to approve the amended and restated Humboldt Bay Fire Joint Powers Exercise of Agreement between the City of Eureka and the Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District. And I'm more than happy to take your questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Citro? Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. Potentially moving from that sixty forty split, and maybe this is for the city manager. What would be the potential cost savings for us from that change from, if any at all?
Director Millar can speak to that, but I will say that all of our budget projections and other things that we've done, even negotiations, M L U discussions and stuff, has been predicated on that happening. But Lane, Dr. Director Millar, doctor sounds pretty good.
Been working on your Ph. D. back there, huh?
So it was about half a million dollars when we did the analysis. Of course, as costs have gone up, that savings will grow over time. But initially, it was about half a million dollars to get from sixty-five percent to sixty.
Thank you for helping me understand what five percent equates to. And then I'm curious, getting to the at-large position. Is there a term limit? Do they serve at the pleasure of the two of you? How does that work?
So it's the same term. It's a two-year term, same as other board members. It is specified in the agreement of the term. There's also language in the new agreement that they can be removed from the board by a majority vote of the members, the members of the member of the J P A. So in other words, a majority vote by the four sitting J P A board members from each member can remove that person.
Okay, yeah, I see the see the term there for a period of two years. And so, you know, in in opening this up, then, is it going to be? How are you going to advertise for it? Are you picking folks that you already know? I'm curious what the process is.
No. Since we haven't gotten approval yet, we haven't talked about advertising, but we would open it up just like any other appointed position on any other border commission through the city or and we'd advertise obviously in the in the district also.
Yeah, we'd likely do pet release, use our social media website, that type of stuff.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
First, thank you, Chief. Great presentation.
Thank you.
So my question about the sixty forty split, is that something we're phasing into or is that something we're abruptly switching to? And how does that? And I might have missed that. You probably said it and I missed it.
So we're phasing into it. The recommendation was made by the consultant back in 2023 that we move to sixty forty based on the number of fire stations, which is the most concrete metric we can use for an equal split. Out of concern for the financial health of the Humboldt Fire District Number One and the pending of their benefit assessment passing in 2024, it was recommended through staff to the J P A board that we do a financial transition plan over five years. And we're in year two of that right now. And we're sixty-two and a half, thirty-seven and a half on year two right now. Last year was that same ratio. We'll conduct a financial analysis after mid-year this year and make a recommendation to the J P A board to continue the sixty-two and a half, thirty-seven and a half for the third year or move to the sixty forty, the third year. But sixty forty will become the reality no later than the fourth year.
And the fourth year is officially on 2027?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty fiscal year, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Fiscal year, okay, twenty-seven. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Molton.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief, for bringing that report, obviously. Our Councilmember Bauer and I are familiar with this transition being on the J P A board. And I just wanted to say that it's really lovely to see the the whole organization evolve. You know, talking to people who were here before it and when the transition happened, it was like a blended family and the stepkids weren't getting along with each other. And now to see our workforce, you know, coming in to the J P A as a whole organization and, you know, just like developing that way. Also getting a chance to look at and to revitalize this or to revise this agreement since it hasn't been touched since it was put into place now that we've taken it out on the road a little bit. And, you know, see what see what needs tightening. So I'm really appreciating the the changes and all of the work that went into this. I also appreciate the idea of an at-large member. We build a lot of consensus over there, but having a tiebreaker is always a good idea. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need a motion? Can I make a motion? There's no motion. Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who's here to comment on this item or who would like to? Seeing no one, we'll take it over to Zoom. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great, so we will bring it back to council for a motion with Councilmember Molton, a second. And then converse comments.
Okay, well, I'll do it the lazy way and say I would like to move in the most grandiose way possible, staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any further comments?
I was gonna wait to save my, I didn't have a question, but I want to say it's been a long journey for staff and for for the fire, you know, the J P A. And and it's been great. I mean, Chief Citro, you've done a great job and before you, Chief Roberson, you know, to make this work for the city and for the district. It's been it's been a challenge. I mean, I remember that the type, the vote, the two-two vote was really hard and no organization should have an even number because it it can be a real challenge. But now here we are and I'm excited to see this finally going forward. So thank you for all your hard work.
If there's nothing further, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
This moves us to the use of Avelo Airlines with City Manager Slattery. We will be providing a consensus on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe it was two meetings ago, Councilmember Fernandez had at a future agenda item section had requested bringing back a report on the use of Avelo and the potential for not using them as a vendor. So staff went and did some research on it. Avelo obviously flies out of Eureka Arcade Airport here. It flies solely down to Southern California to Burbank. And I believe only Burbank now, correct? So staff did some research on how much we've used that for trainings and for travel for city staff. Obviously, as it goes down to Southern California, it's used pretty sparingly. In fiscal year 2425, we approximately had a total of $2,500 spent towards travel using Avelo to Burbank. This was brought forward by Councilmember Fernandez because of their contract that they have with the federal government for deportation flights. We looked at an analysis of potentially utilizing United Airlines, which is our other carrier here. And it's approximately 30 to 40% higher. I just want to make it clear that we don't have a contract with either of these airlines. They're used as a vendor typically in our processes that we use for contracting either services, flights, projects, construction projects. We typically go with the lowest, the lowest cost option for that. So we have used Avelo for that purpose. Overall, it's a really insignificant amount of our travel. We roughly average throughout the whole city with police, public works, community services, city admin, council, everybody associated with the city. And the amount of travel we have, we're probably in the $130,000 a year range for the entire city. And so this is we don't use them very often. So basically, that's the report. The cost savings, if we base it on fiscal year 2425, is about $3,000, $3,500 approximately. And so the alternatives you have for giving consensus to staff is to either continue the use of airlines and continue to use them as an option as far as what would be the most cost-effective or just to transition solely to United Airlines. So if there's any questions, staff is available to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that we we don't have a contract. We we utilize a vendor option, correct? And then what was the average cost for our travel again?
Well, average, we didn't do an average cost. It varies widely depending on where we go. But, you know, it depends. I mean, if we have a League of Cities, that's, I think, where the majority of this 2,500 came from because obviously some of us use that option to get down to Long Beach or get back from Long Beach, one of the two. But it's very difficult to put an average. It really wouldn't make sense because sometimes, I mean, you're going to Georgia and that's obviously a lot more expensive than me going down to Sacramento in a car.
Right.
So we, you know, we didn't factor in the use of vehicles because sometimes we use vehicles as well, too.
Yeah, and just for clarification, National Association for Latino Elected and Appointed Officials is paying for that through a scholarship. So, yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate you pointing that out and holding me accountable. But no, we're not paying for that trip to Georgia.
Okay, let's, I'll put my, I'll throw myself under the bus. I went down to to Washington, D. C. for economic development and that's going to be a lot different than me going to Sacramento for a League of Cities.
Well, and it makes sense just because of how we're geographically isolated and removed from the rest of the state that we have to plan and figure out how we're going to get there at a cost. Are there any other options, though? Flying, driving, those are really the only two that we have and we only have two airlines, correct?
Correct. I mean, there may be an instance where somebody's going on a personal vacation and it's best for them to leave from the area they're at to go to a work event. That's happened in the past. It's pretty rare, but that can happen. But yes, leaving here locally, it's either fly, carpool. I mean, we've been to Sacramento for the League of Cities and we've rented a man and carpool down there as well. So it all depends.
And this isn't a call for a boycott so much as it is saying that we're just not going to utilize city funds potentially for Avelo.
We cannot control what We cannot control what community members use. We can't control what city employees do on their free time, but you guys would have discretion as to whether or not, um, for city business, we use Avelo or not.
Okay. And then I'm curious, uh, Mayor, I'd heard that you say that we're doing this by consensus and not a vote. Was there any particular reason for that decision?
That would be directed at the city manager or the city attorney.
Well, I mean, we discussed it and we just figured that would be easiest.
Since it was provide direction,
Yeah.
we sometimes use that method, yeah.
Okay, is there any difference between the two? I guess is what I'm asking then.
I think one is more of a hard target if we were going to be sued by the airline or by ICE or by whoever, you know? So that's, it's, it's still, it's still a policy option for the council. It's just our recommendation, so.
And, and so it's a matter of potential litigation then?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
I hadn't thought to ask that and I appreciate Councilmember Fernandez asking that question and thank you, um, to our attorney, Bob Black. Can I just confirm numbers really quick? Um, Miles, when you are, sorry. And I almost just demoted you by calling you city, uh, I almost called you city council member, so I almost demoted you. Um, okay, so really quick, um, you said a thirty-five hundred dollar savings. We're spending approximately two thousand dollars on Avelo a year? Or can you just, again, overall, the number for the overall amount that we spend on flights and then that number for Avelo alone?
Oh, so that's the, the difference between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five. So let's say this is a guesstimate because sometimes flight
Sure.
costs differently, but based on what we were looking at between United and Avelo at the time, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars for these flights to get down to Avelo. If we were to use United Airlines for those flights, it would have cost thirty-five hundred dollars for those flights. Now, the overall that I was talking about was the average annually and it's a very rough average because it fluctuates a lot, but it's approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for all of the business-related flight that the city of Eureka does.
All of the business-related flights the city of Eureka does approximately a hundred and thirty thousand?
That's all travel, not just flights?
Oh, yeah, all travel, excuse me, I should clarify that. That includes if we were to use a vehicle, any, all travel associated with work-related conferences, trainings.
Is that the tickets for those conferences and trainings or it's just the travel itself?
I believe Finance Director Balar would be better able to answer, but I do know we spent eighty thousand dollars on United flights in the last fiscal year.
Okay.
And then, which was significantly more than Avelo, but that was going all over the United States, not just to SoCal.
Okay, that's helpful. I just was trying to, so we've got potentially somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars on flights, but of that, about twenty-five hundred dollars is Avelo. So this is really a very under, I mean, we don't use this barely at all, if I am understanding correctly.
Yeah, and I, this is just based on last year. I mean, there could be a potential training that's in Hollywood. Like, a perfect example, I went to a city managers' conference. City managers' conference happened to be in Hollywood two years ago. If I had used that, that number would have been higher. It depends on where those conferences are and where you're at. That was just based on twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, just wanted numbers, thanks.
Further questions? Okay, seeing none, we will open this item up to public comment. You guys can line up on either side of the room, would be great. And you can rock, paper, scissors to see who goes first. I'm teasing. Come on up. Welcome. We lower that for you a little bit.
Hello, thank you. My name is Annie Freaky and I've been a Humboldt County resident for twenty-five years now. And, uh, I am here with Humboldt Democracy Connections and, um, some other members. And so I wrote what I was gonna write to keep it, uh, more brief, but, "In a stunning display of ignorance, forgetfulness, and apathy, our country is entering a dark era. Some say we are sliding into authoritarianism, but I say we are violently crashing, ramming hatred and power into democratic obstacles, jamming propaganda down the throats of an already apathetic citizenry whose thrill comes from watching others be destroyed. We live in a culture of violence and apathy and our government has just supercharged ICE, given seemingly unlimited power and money to an entity with no rules or accountability, only hatred and destruction as their intent. And the discussion on the table is whether or not this council should vote to stop putting money into this war machine. The council who has already shown their humanity by declaring Eureka a sanctuary city and a sanctuary county and a sanctuary state. So should you stop using Avelo for city business? Yes, absolutely, without a doubt. We cannot, as a community, support any part of the abductions, kidnappings, forced removals, and disappearances. ICE will likely be in our community soon and we must be a united front from the beginning. No ICE in our skies, no ICE in our community, no ICE in our streets. Tell Avelo and Andrew Levy they will not get our money while they are part of these atrocities." Thank you.
And come on up. And friends, if we agree, if we could not clap because it takes a lot of time, I maybe do this or this or this, but, thank you. Carry on, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Uh, nice to see you here and thank you for your public service, Mayor and council members and staff. It's honorable work that you're doing here. My name is Brenna Silbury and I'm a proud member of Humboldt Democratic Socialists of America. I'm asking the council to join the boycott of deportation airline Avelo. Immigrants are human beings. Immigrants are farmworkers, restaurant cooks, athletes, scientists, grandparents, and our American founders and ancestors. Immigrants are an integral part of every community in America, including Eureka. They are our neighbors and friends. They are deeply American. Immigrants are us. We must reject the hatred machine that ICE and Avelo are a part of. They want to divide us. They are deliberately terrorizing Californians with thuggish, military-style raids and unaccountable, unlawful deportations. And I thank Councilmember Contreras Deloach for raising this issue of them doing it masked, completely hidden from public view because they were cowardly and ashamed of what they are doing. Yesterday, the highest law enforcement official in our state, Attorney General Robonta, said of these ICE raids, quote, "They are not about safety or justice. They are about meeting enforcement quotas and striking fear in our communities," end quote. Workers are afraid to go to work. Children are afraid to play in public parks. Even people with all of their paperwork in order, including citizens, are now targets of this hatred machine for their ethnicity or political opinions. Entire communities have gone into hiding. In America, no one should be terrorized by our own government. Each and every one of us has better choices than silent complicity with this hatred machine. This council today has the power to reject complicity with this hatred machine. I ask everyone here, everyone, including the council, to do the right thing. Join the boycott against Avelo, the deportation airline. Refuse complicity. Stand up for the best of American values.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Paul Hayden. I'm with Humboldt Democracy Connections and, um, I've worked alongside immigrants in restaurants, construction, landscaping, and on fishing boats. These immigrants supported themselves and their families with strength and hard work. I would hate to see any of my former coworkers torn from their families and sent off to God knows where without due process or a chance to, to defend themselves. Avelo Airlines has become instrumental to ICE's arbitrary, cruel, unaccountable, and unconstitutional arrests of people without regard to their rights to counsel, due process, or habeas corpus. As a sanctuary city, it would be hypocritical for Eureka to continue flying with Avelo. Therefore, we ask that you stop flying Avelo for city business and transition to United Airlines. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Pat.
Hi there. Avelo Airlines, uh, has a contract with ICE and I'm sure you know what that means and I'm sure they may be cheaper, but this is Humboldt County. Humboldt County years ago went seventy percent for Bernie. We, we are Humboldt County. We can't, we cannot, um, assist tho, the thugs and the bastards that are doing this right now to these people. And I want to talk about ICE also, that maybe you think that because we're beyond the Redwood Curtain, that ICE isn't going to come for us. Well, I'll tell you something, they're advertising in Eureka right now, all right? So we're looking at thugs and people and Proud Boys and whatever, all right? And they will be here in Eureka. And I know I'm one of the people that, I'm, and I'm sure a lot of these people here are gonna stand in front of the vulnerable people that might be taken by ICE because these people, they, they're just gonna look funny to them. It doesn't matter whether they're a citizen or not. They're just like a vacuum cleaner and, woo, they're just gonna take them away. And they're not gonna give them any due process, so nobody can prove that they're a citizen or not. This is ICE, okay? These are thugs and Avelo Airlines is part of it. And if they may be cheaper, we still cannot be part of it. And I think we need to boycott them. Thank you. And free Palestine and divest from CalPERS!
Hello? I'm Linda McDaniel. I live in Eureka and I'm a member of Humboldt Democracy Connections. I've had small businesses and I understand how hard it is to keep a business afloat, but I would never consider breaking the law and harming others to stay in business the way Avelo Airlines has. I know some people may deserve to be deported, but one, not by denying them of due process, two, not shackled and endangered en route, and three, not to a concentration camp in a land foreign to them. Avelo is complicit in all three of these. I urge the Eureka City Council to do the right thing and uphold the Constitution of the United States. Please spend our tax dollars on a worthy company when making travel arrangements.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, I'd like to thank council for the space to have this dialogue as well as for what is often a thankless job. And I would also like to thank the community members for coming out tonight. I think in the coming years, as the federal government becomes increasingly unreliable, to say the least, local government and community organizing will be more important than ever. Uh, my name is Justin Hawkins. I'm a Cal Poly alumni, engineer working in the county and I'm the chair of the Wetlands and Creeks Committee for the city of Arcata. But I come tonight as a concerned citizen, um, here to urge the council to consider this measure, boycott, whatever is legally safe to say, um, from the perspective of political engagement, something that is at an all-time low, particularly amongst my generation and those younger. But I guarantee that they will all be waking up tomorrow and reading the Lost Coast Outposts and in these troubling times, even small acts of resistance can sow seeds and inspire and show my friends that things are possible. So I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you. It's so noisy, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Is my mic on? I guess it is, thank you. I'm Chris Will with Humboldt Democracy Connections and I have a quote tonight from, uh, Redhead Black Belt article with a quote from Councilmember Castellano. She said, "The cost of any threatened loss of revenue to the city of Eureka is much less significant than the potential cost of harm to the people who are immigrants and call this place home. We can then surmise that an increase in cost for travel is much less significant than supporting an airline that is directly involved in harming people, some of who call this place home. For this reason, we ask that you stop flying Avelo for Eureka City business and trans, and transition to United Airlines." Now, I don't know if many of you noticed that that big ugly bill that was passed last week increased ICE's budget to at least five times that of our, our Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI. So this is going to be coming at us fast and furiously and so I definitely think that we can do this as part of the resistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Mark Walker from the Humboldt County Democratic Socialists of America and I'm speaking in support of, uh, not providing public money to Avelo Airlines in any capacity. The financial savings, no matter how large or how small, of using Avelo are outweighed by the other concerns, such as the moral ones, that come with supporting an airline that participates in the current administration's mass deportation project. A project that targets people based on race and political beliefs, ignores due process, and violates human rights. On questioning, Avelo has, among other things, refused to state whether it would comply with FAA regulations requiring an evacuation strategy for all passengers, refused to state whether it would operate deportation flights in defiance of court orders, refused to state whether it'd fly shackled children, refused to state whether they would fly to deport US citizens. Avelo is a corporation that in the pursuit of profit is willing to flout human rights, US law, and just basic safety regulations to an extraordinary degree. Our money should not be supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Philip Sutter, um, local resident, uh, associate with DSA. So I would urge that you guys stop using Avelo, uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, I'm sorry for the inconvenience that may even cause you guys in your travel. However, uh, with this business deciding that it's going to make choices of allowing our government in its lawlessness and escalation of what would normally just be misdemeanor, uh, challenges, it shows the escalation of force and fascism that we're allowing if we continue using these kinds of things. I have family who had to escape Poland. Then I've had family who've had to, uh, be, they were an MP and volunteered and broke down the, the doors to Auschwitz. And yet here we are standing, deciding about our government in it deciding that's going to kidnap people. The people doing this refuse to identify themselves. They refuse to actually provide judicial warrants, uh, that are signed. They refuse every form of process that supposedly makes the place great. Then they've escalated their armaments, they've escalated their force, and unless you guys were going to stand in some way to deny them this access, this is probably the least you could do to show that you're going to not actually help them. So with that said, I hope that you will take that into consideration because it's coming at us hard and fast. And he's, the, our government has bullied themselves into being bought off by these corporations to create slaves. From alligator Alcatraz to El Salvador, to Libya, to Sudan, these are places that have, are either These are places that are either in civil war, have admonished torture, have associations with gangs, and that are doing incredible disappearances. And these are people who are supposed to be on our land and protected by our laws. And it either means something or it doesn't.
Thank you. Hi. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sam, I'm a member of the DSA. I'm not going to argue with you again why ICE is evil or why Avelo is an evil self-serving corporation, most of them are. I've worked for a lot of them. But fundamentally, Avelo is going to abandon us soon. Is it going to be tomorrow? Is it going to be a year from now? Is it going to be two years from now? They abandoned Sonoma very recently for ICE, they abandoned a whole bunch of other small rural folks. They're going to do that because we know this is what airlines like them do. So we can hold on to them, we can say, please, please, master, would you just give me a cheap air flight? Or we could actually have principle. We could actually say, screw you guys, we're not flying with you. And I know you're thinking, it's not a lot of money, and you're right, it's not a lot of money. We're a small city, we don't matter, we're not significant. But if somebody like Gandhi were here, what would he say to you? He'd say to you, things like this start small. We have power. We can make a difference in this. We can show the rest of Humboldt that we're taking a stand. And if we're lucky, we can show the rest of the nation we're taking a stand. So let's have a spine, and let's tell Avelo, go to hell.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and the rest of the staff here, my name is Elle Penner. I'm a 35-year-old woman living here in Eureka, I've lived here for about eight years. I have a master's degree, I work for the state of California, I'm a social worker, and I have a six-and-a-half-year-old daughter. I didn't grow up here, I grew up in a place where I didn't always feel like the environment was safe for me or for people who I was friends with. Looking back, I wish that there were things that my parents and other people in leadership would have done, stances they would have taken, that would have helped me to feel safer and my community to feel more vibrant. I'm really, really encouraged by what the leadership here is doing to set standards, to set a community ambiance, to set cultural expectations for my little girl in the town where she's growing up. I want to thank you for being willing to have this subject discussed, for being willing to have public communication around it. I want to thank you for your service to our community. I want to thank you for being present for difficult conversations. And I hope at the end of this that I can thank you for making a call of integrity, for setting an example, and for establishing a route that while I believe it's going to continue to get harder, is one that I can be as comfortable as I can staying here in America and raising my daughter in. Please, please, don't use city funds as small as they are to go to Avelo. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Paul, I've lived here, Paul Hilton, I've lived here 29 years. I help homeless veterans here in Eureka, the nation's finest. I wanted to note that Global Ex-Allian Airlines is also one of these deportation flights, and they have had their, what are they called? The people actually serve drinks and everything on the flights. Their union has been quoted in reporting that the ICE agents frequently do not even listen to their instructions on takeoff or landing, and so much can go wrong at a thousand or anywhere around their feet. We probably don't want an air disaster here in Humboldt. Not to mention the disaster of using Avelo to allow them for their deportation flights elsewhere as well. So yeah, don't do this. Let's get rid of Avelo.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to make a comment?
Hi, my name's Diana Berry, and I just want to thank you also for getting this on your agenda and talking about it and allowing us all to speak about it. And I'm just hoping that you do choose to no longer use them for your city business, and I'm hoping this will open a pathway so that maybe the county will ask them to leave. And we can attract another airlines in here that isn't involved in human trafficking and all the other bad stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else in chambers, we will move over to Zoom. Do you see anyone on Zoom?
S Townsend. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Okay, I am obviously in support of not spending $2,000 or $10,000 or $20,000 a year using this deportation airline, an economy airline that got its start in the casino game. So I think it's an easy decision for you all. I do want to question just travel in general. We do have an issue, it's called climate change, I don't know if you've all heard about it, but it still is an issue. And flying is a significant cost to our climate and our environment. So as much as possible, if you do not have to travel for city business, please do not, because it is a significant cost to our environment. And also, while you're at it, let's boycott and let's divest from a lot of other companies that are contributing to the enslavement and the apartheid and the genocide that is happening all throughout the world. I know it's been brought up earlier in previous meetings about divesting and pressuring CalPERS, your retirement mutual fund, to divest from as many companies as possible that are profiting from the literal starvation and enslavement of people in Gaza and the West Bank. Caterpillar, Microsoft, Google, Amazon, all those big bad bullies, that would be great as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anyone else?
Sophia.
Can't see anyone.
Sophia?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Sophia Nix, I'm the interim cosecretary with Humboldt DSA. I'm respectfully asking the Eureka City Council to divest entirely from Avelo Airlines. Give them no more money, no more business. Innocent people are being essentially held as prisoners in their own homes, scared that if they leave, they will be unconstitutionally rounded up by ICE and taken away. Families are being torn apart, traumatized, victimized unjustly. It's racist, it's cruel and vile, we are better than this, we can do better, please, please.
Thank you.
LG?
Hello.
Hello.
Dear council members, my name is Lev Golod, I'm speaking in support of the Avelo boycott. As a newcomer to Arcata, I'm struck by the level of social conscience and political engagement among my new friends and neighbors. This community is unusual in its degree of civic-mindedness and public spirit. Accordingly, it follows that they look to elected officials to advance a similar level of moral fiber. Given the salience of this issue, the public is eager for the council to show more leadership and stand on the right side of history. Concretely, I urge the council to cancel the use of Avelo for official business until such time as Avelo ceases to facilitate the violent, reprehensible, and extralegal expulsion of immigrants. The discussion of the financial implications shows that there's a modest price to pay for doing the right thing. Our community deserves an airline that reflects our values and our commitment to diversity and the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Hi, City Council, thank you for bringing this issue to the agenda. I really appreciate having the chance to speak about this and hear from our community. And just, yeah, appreciative of the fact that you are considering this because while it was really great and inspiring that you passed the Sanctuary City ordinance, words on paper only mean so much, so this is you putting your money, or taking your money in alignment with what you said our city stands for. So I support the city not giving any more of our money to fascist airlines and, you know, spending our resources wisely and in alignment with our values. So yeah, I urge you to do whatever it is you need to do procedurally to divest yourselves from spending any money on Avelo Airlines. And I think that that will really make a difference if our city does this and lots of other places do too. Thank you.
You see anyone else?
I see no one else.
Okay, so seeing no one, we will bring this back to council for consensus and comments. Councilmember Fernandez?
So my request for this review, and I think it's been pointed out too, of Avelo is based on the notion that not only are we a sanctuary city, but we're also a sanctuary county by initiative nonetheless, and at the state level through the legislature. And, you know, it goes, I don't want to say without saying because it needs to be said at this point, but not one to quote from religious texts, there is one that does come to mind, and that's, "Do not mistreat or oppress a foreigner, for you are foreigners in Egypt." And our country has made errors in the past in Supreme Court decisions, and we're seeing quite a few of those come up more frequently, both in Dred Scott and Plessy, denying the rights of African-Americans and creating the conditions for separate but equal, respectively. Avelo's operation of deportation flights and contract with immigration and ICE Customs Enforcement is legal, though not moral. And we should not be complicit or complacent in the denial of due process or other 14th Amendment rights. And I understand the compulsion to go with consensus, but I would be remiss if I were to not make a motion. And so that motion would be that we discontinue our use of Avelo as a vendor until such time that they are no longer in contract with the US Department of Homeland Security to operate deportation.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I wrote a statement. Also. We have an obligation to spend the public's resources responsibly. That means economic responsibility as well as a moral responsibility. Supporting Avelo Airlines is not only morally irresponsible, but economically irresponsible as well. The campaign of terror that is being waged against the innocent Latino community with or without their papers in order, the suspension of due process is not only a stain on the soul of our democracy, it is a crippling injury to our economy that we will feel soon, harming every consumer, every investor, every worker, but hitting working-class people, like most of us in Eureka, hitting us the hardest. I agree with the commenter who said that this is the least we could do. I agree, we should not spend any more public money with Avelo Airlines.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sure, I wrote a small something. Appreciate, I think the sentiment across council and community members who came out tonight. We as community members and representatives of Eureka residents, our role is to act as responsible stewards of public funds and also of public trust. We are currently experiencing an onslaught of attacks on human rights and community well-being. Though the economic impact is rather small in terms of Avelo's overall budget related to our decision tonight, our decision not to fly on this airline represents a statement that there are better choices and better futures possible for our community. I appreciate people being here tonight and look forward to continuing to work with you to advance visionary futures with tangible actions.
Councilmember Conteros Deluge?
Yeah, I, prior to Councilmember Fernandez bringing this ahead of us, when I heard that Avelo was doing this, my first thought was, I won't be flying with them anymore. And I appreciate you bringing it forward. You know, I had a conversation with a member of the community about this, and she asked how I felt about it. And I shared with her that I don't have any trouble not flying Avelo anymore. But I also said, and I want to share this because I think this is important, the level of corporate entanglement that exists is really problematic for a very, very cheap, very low amount. Our data has been recently brokered and sold by ARC to the SEC, the DEA, the Air Force, DHS, CPB, the Secret Service, US Marshals, and the ATF. Those that were in party to, used a private broker to sell your transactions and your flight information are United, Delta, American Airlines, Southwest Airlines, Alaska Airlines, and JetBlue. And I think that this is important because one of the things is, they're accessing your information through third-party sites. Because there are privacy protections around if you book your flights through the airlines themselves. And this is the thing that this council has actually had to address multiple times this year, is what happens when you involve third-party vendors in privacy. And there's a reason why different groups, in my opinion, are using third-party vendors, like Flock, for example, so that they can circumvent the laws that we as a nation and individuals have passed to put guardrails on your personal private information and how it's used. That is why these third-party companies are used, is to get around that, rather than to come at it directly and bring it to the American people to change those laws if they choose to. In this ongoing, large dragnet of, you know, eroding what little privacy we have. So I want to bring that up because I think, you know, this speaks to a larger issue. We can pull out of Avelo, it's not going to change, and we should, but it's not going to change this broader problem of this corporate entanglement and the erosion of, the ongoing erosion of our rights, I think, that really picked up with the US Patriot Act post 9/11. Just my opinion. So, you know, I think that the benefit, you know, obviously outweighs it, but I do think that, you know, interestingly enough, ARC, who was the data broker on all of this information, wanted their own info hidden, they didn't want it revealed without court orders or subpoenas. So the corporations are asking for a level of protection that they don't want to allow us to have. And so, yeah, I'm on the same page with this, obviously. I think, you know, I had a conversation with Councilmember Fernandez about this because I was kind of going back and forth, and I said, yeah, we have, these corporations have their fingers deep in it in all these different directions. But I thought you brought up something that was really the salient point. And that is, they may be selling our data and that kind of thing, but Avelo actually has a direct hand in physically transporting these human beings. And I would argue, one thing, you know, Councilmember Fernandez, you know, you can quote scripture to me because I do it to you all the time. Thank you for supporting my Christianity. Thank you for supporting my Christianity. I appreciate it. But I would argue, actually, when they say that it may be legal but not moral, I would say that it's not legal. There's plenty, plenty of rulings over time that show what our constitutional standard is on habeas corpus and other things, that you do have this right to petition, to redress if you believe that you've been detained unlawfully. And I think that it's important to acknowledge that that is not happening, and that is a violation of our constitution, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many rulings prior to this time. And further, while I'm on my soapbox, the other thing about this is, is you have people who now have valid green cards. They had valid green cards, and those are being removed, not because they committed a crime or anything else, but they are being stripped. How does that happen? How is that happening? And it's not lost on me, obviously. My name is Contreras, it doesn't matter how I look, the rest of my family does not look like me. And that's not my name by marriage, it's my name by heritage. And I have the benefit of some protection here, but other members of my family do not. And they have the misfortune of being down in Arizona and closer to the border. So, yeah, you got to take small stands where you can. Maybe it doesn't make a big difference to Avelo if we do, you know, they don't have our $2,000, but we have an opportunity to make a statement and take a stand and say that we want our constitutional standards to continue forward as they have been, and that's my position.
Oh, Councilmember Bauer?
Can't follow that because you said everything I would say, and appreciate you for saying Mayor, unless you have something to say, I'd say, call for the question.
Yeah, I do just have one thing to say, just a brief thing, because I never say anything anymore. You know, I think, and I've heard it here tonight, you know, this may not make a big difference to Avelo. It may not, but I think it makes a huge difference to our community, a huge difference. And I was sitting in this meeting tonight, listening to everybody talk, I was thinking of this student that I had, and I talked about him when we talked about the sanctuary city, and how he came to me and he said, you know, Ms. Kim, you're the mayor, right? And I said, yeah. And he said, you know, my parents are afraid to leave and go to work, and I, you know, I don't know what to do, what can you do? And I felt like I'd been kicked in the guts, right? Because what am I going to tell this, you know, sixth grader? And I tell you, I was so grateful to be able to go back to school after we passed that sanctuary ordinance and tell him, and have him go home and tell his mom, and have his mom be so happy. He told me his mom was so happy. And that's why we make these decisions, because that's our future. And so I appreciate everybody that came here tonight to comment and to be a part of this situation. Now, Councilmember Bauer has called for the questions, so we will vote.
I will not vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Being here, we do have one more item on the agenda, and we have four minutes till we need to extend the meeting, so if I could get a motion to do so?
I'll move to extend us to 9:45.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, and that will bring us to, oh, excuse me, before we have this presentation, are there any future agenda items? Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Yeah, you know, in this, and feel free to, you know, if this is something you feel is better for a different way to do it, if, what is the thing that we're doing in October?
Strategic visioning.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I want to make clear it's September.
Oh, it's in September.
Okay. I don't want to have to try and reschedule that again.
Is it really? It's September? All right. Well, I don't have the calendar. All right, cut me slack, I'm a little tired, guys, it's been a week. When I went out on our beautiful new trail and was going through there, and I was like, this is awesome, somebody had said, hey, is there going to be any kind of charging so that people who are in, like, mobility, scooters and things like that, any way for them to be able to access it? So I had some questions, and I just, it got me thinking about, and again, this might be something better for strategic visioning, I was wondering if we could have staff kind of take a look at how do we make, all of our departments, is there any way that we can make things more accessible for people who are physically or intellectually disabled, whether that's, you know, larger print options for people who can't see well, or whether that's, you know, some sort of transport option with golf carts on, you know, trails? I don't know, but I was wondering if there's some way where we could have a report on how to make things more accessible for people across the board.
Yeah, and just to say, there's a lot of tools for accessibility audits that are available.
So, do we have thumbs up? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to future, I mean, to City Manager Reports with Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I'll be providing an update on the Crowley property, and I'm very happy to say that the Crowley property, on the Crowley property, the Bayside Village Transitional Housing Project is active and operational. The dining facilities, the laundry facilities, the restrooms, and all but two of the residential units are up and running. And I just want to give a few photos and a few quotes to come along with, at the Crowley property, or the Bayside Village now. These photos are taken either yesterday or today, and this first quote is very great, this is for someone who, a tenant, a resident of the site, very grateful for a new lease on life. And this quote was given by someone who had, prior to moving in here, had been experiencing homelessness for 13 years. Another quote was, "Great little community. And I love it. I have a home for me and my pet." As of today, there are 28 individuals, 14 dogs, and three cats that are residing at the Bayside Village at the Crowley property. Happy to be inside, was another quote. Some of the dogs are large, some of them are smaller, there are folks that have one, two, and even three dogs that are residing at the Bayside Village. Many of the tenants there have, and the most common answer to how long have you been experiencing homelessness prior was 10 to 15 years. Later this week, someone will be moving in that has been experiencing homelessness for 35 years. "A great stepping stone," was how one resident described the property and the project. "And a great new part of my life, waiting to see what's next." And what is next are going to be enhanced programs and services delivered directly onsite and at our, uplift Eureka's Community Resource Center. We have a great partnership with the Betty Quan Chen Homeless Foundation, which is providing a lot of the site management and some of the supportive services. Within the city, the uplift Eureka and care teams will be providing some onsite innovative programming to really focus on the current and present needs of the folks there that are onsite, and multiple community partners have already signed on to be a part of this delivery team. So many, this project has taken quite some time, and it's changed slightly, significantly over the years, but it's open. The goal is to continue moving folks in this week, and by the end of next week, to be fully, at full capacity, having at least 38 folks onsite, and additional dogs, and additional pets. This is an ultra-low barrier facility. Their pets are welcome, up to three per unit, and we are strictly following the homeless, sorry, the housing-first principles, our COC's written standards, and best practices on this site. I'd have to say, it's, you know, there's so many people made this project possible, it's going back years, the permitting process to get things going was monumental. The, a lot of folks had, in one way or another, contributed to this project, and, you know, we have folks from at least four different departments directly contribute to this. I'd have to say, though, I just want to do a huge shout-out right now for our chief building official, Riley, Brendan Riley. Without his help, I don't think this project would be, there would be folks residing there today. He really has streamlined this and made this possible, stepped in when this project was about 40% complete, and really just made it happen, and I just really appreciated all his efforts, on top of his full-time job with the city, being able to do this. And so I can't thank him enough for all of his efforts. I wanted to invite him here, to be here today, he's currently out of town. Our senior outreach worker, Robert Williams, has done an amazing job of communicating, tracking, and documenting folks for this site in particular. It's grant-funded, so it's for folks that are, had been living in encampments along the waterfront trail from Dale North Street South. He's been working with these folks for at least three years, and we are, you know, hopefully by the end of next week, this project, this, the site will be at full capacity, and then as soon as folks are housed through, you know, a variety of other programs, the idea is to turn this over and open this up for more folks. And so the list is still continuing, we're, you know, still working with folks that maybe weren't the first 38 people to move in, but we're still keeping up with them, we're still providing outreach services and supportive services, and it's been a huge project, and really, the construction is, there's still some site improvements that are going to continue to happen, but now really the, it shifts from a construction project to a services project and a program, and this is something that our entire team is really looking forward to, is having the opportunity to provide direct services to really some of the folks that really need it the most out of this community. And, you know, going forward, if I do present any more Crowley property updates, it will be Bayside Village Transitional Housing Project updates. And I, there's probably, I guess I'll say one more thing, outside of the city too, several organizations made this happen. I know that the county's Department of Health and Human Services really helped out with this from early on and throughout the project, and, you know, many organizations, Derek Lavich with the CR's Construction Technology Class, he had his crew down there multiple times, folks from Mercer Frasier and Pacific Builders helped out, all the contractors that had worked on this, this really was a community effort to make this a reality, and I know it's taken several years, but it's a reality today, and I know the folks onsite are extremely grateful.
And I just want to add, he's extremely humble, but more awkward than humble, but it wouldn't have happened without Jeff Davis as well. Jeff Davis, not only from the administrative standpoint, but definitely from the boots on the ground, and him and Brendan Riley have spent an inordinate amount of time outside of work, they're both salaried employees, and have spent a significant amount of time to make this happen, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. So, can we ask a few questions? So I just have three for now. Are there any kids living there?
Currently, there are no children living onsite, but there are several that are visiting, so there may be parents that are maybe looking for custody, or parents that don't have full custody. I was down there today, and I was there for a short time today, but saw over, I think four kids show up today. So, yeah, there are children onsite, but there are currently none that reside there.
We do have a family with adult children, do we not?
There's one family that's going to be moving in, but they are adult children, yes.
I'm glad to hear that family's moving in. And then, is it still transitional rent? So do they still pay a small portion of rent there to kind of get a rental history?
Yeah, so they do, they do sign a lease, so they have renters' rights and responsibilities. The rent is pretty low. If they aren't able to pay that rent, the Betty Quan Chen Foundation received quite a bit of donations and have been doing a lot of fundraisers, their rent will be paid, you know, there's like a scholarship or sponsorship program, so if they aren't able to pay, they, you know, the scholarship program will pay for that. If folks are willing to pay, or if they are able to pay, once they leave that site, hopefully to permanent housing, every penny that they paid at rent, they will be getting back, and so they'll have that to pay for a deposit for moving expenses, and then in addition to accruing the rental history.
Great. And then lastly, I heard you say, so, and I've heard this, so the priority was people that were living on the trail, but I've noticed too that there's a portion of, I know it's hard to notice, but there is a portion on, what is it, Second and, it's not Second and A, but right across from Free Meal on the corner there, where people have kind of, they're not there anymore. Now, were those people that had lived on the trail before and that are now being housed down there?
Yeah, so I know of at least eight individuals that when it was getting close, because this was, you know, the date that this was supposed to go live, it had been pushed back for one reason or another, the site just wasn't ready, when it became, you know, time where it was eminently going to open, folks were afraid that if they weren't present, and, you know, if our outreach workers couldn't find them, that they would be passed over, so a lot of folks came when it was, you know, less than a month away from opening, came down to St. Vincent de Paul, where we're kind of in that area, and at least eight individuals that were sheltering in that region are currently over at the Crowley property, and those folks were prioritized as far as like the move-in schedule, so, yeah, at least eight folks.
I just want to share my huge appreciation to you and everybody that made this happen, finally. What a gift to our community. Are there any further questions? Councilmember Moulton, and then Castellano?
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you, just thank you, for everything you've done, everything that's been done to make this happen. My very first meeting, or the last meeting before I was sworn in, was the one where they got the zoning figured out so they could actually do this, four and a half years ago. To, from that point to actually, from being able to do it, to actually getting people into, into the rooms there, and I hope we're able to do more. I just want to fully acknowledge that this is an enormous step, and is a very happy step, and that also, this is not going to solve homelessness as a, as a Eureka problem, as a Humboldt problem, as a California problem, as a national problem, and that I appreciate that this is one step in a ladder, and that we are also working on all of those other steps on the ladder, and I know a lot of that comes under the programs you're involved in, so thank you for that. My question actually was just, do you have a waiting list for these spaces already?
Yes, yes, our outreach workers are constantly out in the community, and they do have a waitlist. I don't know, it might be in the 30s, you know, there's quite a few folks that are still out, and then, you know, right now, we're shifting and really trying to do everything we can to house the folks that are currently residing there, to open up more rooms for those folks, but yes, there is currently a waitlist.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up the savings, or rent as savings. Worked with an organization that did that for transitional age youth coming out of foster care, basically taught them, you know, the skill of being able to pay rent, but then turning that back over to them, so, because move-in costs can be daunting or prohibitive for a lot of folks, so thanks for bringing, for pointing that out.
Really, I want to say thank you, yeah, and as Councilmember Moulton pointed out, this has taken a lot of endurance and perseverance effort, you know, problem-solving, and I just really appreciate you and everyone who's been involved along the way. Thank you also, City Manager Slattery, for, you know, helping, you know, for sure, doing a lot to support seeing this through, you know, and, yeah, I'm very thankful, and it's been a real honor to get to be here on the dais, you know, to support this effort. And also just want to say, with the news coming out today too, of the Wiat tribe winning the $4 million grant to help build affordable housing projects in Eureka, it's a good day for thinking about housing and, yeah, just, it's a, it's a community effort, so I feel less than eloquent in terms of how, you know, how I feel about this, and, yeah, it's, I feel, you know, a lot of folks, there's a lot of hard thing, there are many hard things happening in the world, you know, and I feel really proud to see the things that we're working on, and, yeah, just thank you so much.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just to thank you. I know there's been a lot of, I mean, like, the wrong bolts showed up for the walls, and it's been so many things that have slowed this down beyond our control, but I think... it's been so many things that have slowed this down beyond our control, but I think probably there isn't any staff in Eureka that haven't somehow been involved in this, you know, and I plan on giving Riley a hug, and everybody else that was involved, because what a lift, and we've been talking about this for four years, right? So, but I know you've spearheaded it, and you're so generous in your, in your, you know, sharing of the, of the, kudos, but you have been an instrumental part, and thank you, and thanks to everybody, and just happy to see it done, man. So happy, thanks.
Anybody else? Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
I got to see you out there for a brief minute. Yeah, it was really, that was the first time I had been out there, was this last week when I was biking out there on the trail, and, you know, stopped off and asked, I'm going to forget his name, anyway, you know, asked him, how many units do we have, how many are full so far, you know, what's the waiting list look like, and that kind of thing? You know, it reminds me of that starfish story, you know, where they're, you know, the guy is throwing the starfishes back in the water, and someone says, why are you bothering doing this? You know, you're only going to be able to save, like, a few of them, and he's like, well, you know, how does this even matter? And he's like, well, it mattered to that one. You know, I know we still have a lot of people that we need to help, but it matters to them, like, we're getting to see the pictures, thanks for bringing these pictures, it's cute to, you know, see them, you know, what they're, to get to see their happy animals and stuff like that, too, and I know it's a slog, everything in the government is a slog and takes forever, and every imaginable thing that can go wrong does, it seems like it's Murphy's Law always. So thank you for the persistence of everybody on the staff in getting, in getting through this and continuing, because it makes a difference for every single person that's in there, so I'm just really grateful, thank you.
Anything further?
I just wanted to say something. It was an inordinate amount of time in doing this, but we learned a lot from that and have a very good idea, and, I mean, a vast majority of that was due to logistical problems that were beyond our control. We had an electrical problem that was probably about a year and a half delay. It raised the cost of this increasingly, that probably added another year to that, but I think we've, Davis and crew, and I wouldn't be remiss in saying Engineering and Brittany Powell is also a part of this, we have a really good idea on what it takes to take a raw piece of land, get the utilities to it, and get a very compassionate housing project done, that's going to be a lot easier going forward.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. Jeff Davis, you are a rock star. I think I need to give you one of these. Hundred percent. And on that happy note, Jeff Davis, we are adjourned.